Okay, good. All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead and get this, um, our Board of Education meeting start, um, called to order for the July twenty seventh, six thirty meeting. Um, before I start, I wanna thank everybody for joining us tonight. And tonight, we're gonna have our meeting again via Zoom. Since the county still has a forty-five person limit on mass gatherings. Uh, we decided this would be the best way to include the most people. Um, and so we went this route once, once more. I think next week, we're gonna try to move back in person, but for now, um, we're still under this forty-five person limit. So with that, I'll call to order roll call with the flag salute. So please stand. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next up, we have our adoption of the agenda, and I'll, I'll move to adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second by Matthew. All those in favor? Seven, okay, seven zero. All right, next up, our routine action. First, we have the approval of the minutes from the July twentieth, twenty twenty regular meeting.
So move.
Yep, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Matthew and a second by Robin. All those in favor? Or is that Pam?
Yeah.
Sorry, all those in favor, seven zero. Okay, next up is our citizens in the community presentations before the board. And first up, we have D N E A with Joel Addis.
Good evening. Joel Addis, special education teacher at El Paso Elementary and president of D N E A. Um, this last week, I think, as we all know, um, has seen significant fluidity for public education in the state of Kansas. Um, through this time, D N E A members have continued to collaborate with district administrators on operations and safety portions of the return to learn plan, as well as calendar options for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. This evening, um, D N E A hopes that the board would vote on these components of the return to learn plan for two reasons. First, all stakeholders in Derby Public Schools are eagerly anticipating the conditions under which they will begin the school year. Second, we know that in these unprecedented times, teachers will be working under different conditions than those defined in their negotiated agreement. No matter the start date of the school year, a memorandum of understanding for these unique cert- conditions will need to come before you for approval at the August third board meeting. This will not be possible unless we know the plan in its entirety. As I said last week, walking away from tonight's board meeting, knowing the complete plan will be a strong step forward. Once this plan passes board approval, we can continue to move forward together. Finally, I would like to take a moment to thank those educators who gave of their time this week for this purpose. And then also, um, again, D N E A is available for questions about the plan from any educators who would have them. Thank you, and I would now stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments for Joel? All right, I'm not seeing any. All right, thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we're gonna move to our patron presentations, and I believe we do have one signed up, and we have one submitted comment. So before we start, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, read a statement real quick. Okay, the Board of Education has a strong desire to hear from its constituents living in Derby Public Schools' boundaries. Please state your name and address, be brief in your remarks, and avoid repeating the views of previous speakers. I ask that groups with, with same special interests appoint a spokesperson. You're given a maximum of five minutes to address the board. Comments should refer to issues and not personalities. The board shall not hear personal complaints concerning any employee or groups of employees of the school district or any person connected with the school district. These concerns should be addressed through administration. Presentations must be in good taste, befitting the occasion and the dignity of the board meeting. The open forum allows for the board to hear public comments, but there should be no expectation of the part of the citizen for a response at this time. The board will take your comments under advisement and conduct its business within the confines of board protocol. Patrons had the opportunity to sign up by noon today to speak for the boards or submit comments by providing their name and address to an online survey. We did not have, actually, we do have one signed up, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so let's, let's go ahead, and the last sentence, we don't have to read. We did have someone signed up. Um, so let's go ahead and, um, let our speaker, the twenty, do you have the name of the individual?
Mister Huivien.
Okay.
Hey, um, thank you for letting me come out here. Um, I didn't really wanna say anything, but, uh, after I got the email about the survey for the calendar option, I wasn't really excited about what I saw, and I kinda saw what was going to happen. So I wanted just kind of share my approach at it and my look at it. Um, before I began talking, I wanna share this short little video clip that I found, um, online, and it's, hopefully, it'll explain my position a little bit better.
We're not getting any audio. Do you, do you have it? Turned on? Can you try to check your video? We're not able to hear it.
Say that again?
Yeah, we're not getting any audio from, we can just see the video, but no audio.
No audio, huh? Well, shoot, that's probably on my fault here. Um, let me see here. Give me one second.
That we also hear from public health experts. NBC's Dr. John Torres talked with a group of them about the crucial factors that parents need to consider when deciding whether to send their kids back to the classroom.
As schools struggle with reopening safely, NBC News reached out to five top pediatricians across the country. A random sampling of doctors to find out just how dangerous the coronavirus is for kids. Our experts agree, most children don't get as sick as adults, and that serious complications are rare.
This has been a strange pandemic, because usually for respiratory viruses, children are the first and the most substantially affected. And this has really been a flip of that, where it's our adults, and particularly our older adults, that have been more affected.
In fact, kids only account for two percent of all cases. Doctors say they don't expect that number to significantly increase when schools open, because kids don't appear to be good at spreading the virus.
Are kids as good at transmitting the virus as adults?
The data that's come out now, um, seems to show that most transmissions occur from adults to adults or adults to children.
The younger you are, probably the less likely you are to be able to transmit the disease.
While many teachers are concerned about reopening schools so soon, the five doctors we spoke to agreed. The benefits of being in the classroom far outweigh the risk of disease, but the key is to reopen safely.
Would you let your kids go back to school?
I will. My kids are looking forward to it.
Yes, period, absolutely.
Absolutely, as much as I can.
Without a hesitation.
Without hesitation, yes.
I have no concerns about sending my child to school in the fall.
I would let my kids go back to school.
Dr. John Torres, NBC News.
And pretty much, that's kind of where I'm going with this here. Um, I just wanna make three points, and then I'm done. First off, whether we open in September or we open on original date, nothing's gonna change. The virus is still gonna be around, so I'm imploring you guys not to move the calendar back. Let's open up our schools, and let's do it as soon as we can. Um, I also wanna address that there is probably a silent majority right now that's kinda struggling. Um, we have families here that are struggling financially, emotionally, and our schools provide more than an ed- education. It's like the ultimate resource center. So for the last four months, these families have been doing it on their own. And I just wanna say that if we push the date back even further, these guys are gonna be on their own even further, and it might cause more damage than the virus itself. And the last thing I wanna address is, if we listen to the experts, there could be another shutdown, another school closure. If that is the case, then we would increase our class time. And I've done the online thing, and it wasn't great. Um, there was some issues with students not showing up, so you can't replace in teacher time. So please consider that. Let's make the most out of it that we have with our students. That's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bean, for the comments, um, and for sharing that video. Um, and we will, we will take that into consideration as we get on to those parts of the agenda tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next up, we did have a submitted comment. We only had one, so I'm actually gonna just read this comment. Um, and it is from Becky Line, a Derby resident. Um, and her statement is, Derby Board of Education members, I understand that the B O E is working to approve safety plan for the district tonight, but if the plan that is approved tonight mirrors that was, what was provided last week, it is not nearly enough information to make a responsible decision. As parents, we will, we were all in the same boat. We're trying to decide what version of school to choose for our kids. Their health is, and safety is a top priority. Health includes not only physical health, but emotional and mental health as well. We must choose between in-person or online schooling for at least the first nine weeks, but the information we have to make this decision is lacking. We're asked to choose whether or not we want our children physically in schools, but we're not told what that will look like. Show us what that would look like for our children. What defines social distancing inside of our schools? Give us a video tour, but to expect. Will students be able to interact with and do group activities? Will paper be used, or will be bulked done on the Chromebook? Will kids be expected to stay at their desk all day? Will they eat lunch in their classrooms? Will they only be allowed one recess? What will specials look like? Will fans be permitted inside classrooms or A C units are not working? Well, will classes look, what will classes look like at the middle school and high school? Will all electives be offered? Will students be able to participate in band and choir? If so, how will they be distanced? What about the ventilation systems there? There is a lot of air movement. Will there be more than six feet given to accommodate for that? Will masks with holes in them be required for students who play wind instruments as recommended by KESHA? What are the expectations for hybrid learning if needed? What does the online schedule look like? What are the expectations for students participating in online schooling? Parents working from home need to know what to expect so they can decide whether or not online learning is even a possibility for their families. Just because we're home doesn't mean we're able to facilitate effective learning all day while balancing work. Another consideration to keep in mind, what is the benchmark for determining if schools can even open? If the board chooses to begin on August thirteenth with a positive test rate of above thirteen percent in Central County currently, would we, would we be immediately starting with online learning anyway? Would we be starting in the hybrid model? If so, what determines learning in one or two days? And what would the starting in time to be? We all know that flexibility is necessary. Our environment changes one day to the next, even hour by hour. But these are important details parents need to know to make informed decisions. We need to be able to evaluate risk to our children, and in my family's case, an immunocompromised and high-risk individual against the potential benefits of being in school. But we can't do that, because we don't have an idea of what school will look like, and not, and we don't have the full expectations of what online learning looks like. Parents need to be able to anticipate and plan. Many parents want their kids back in the building, but you're, but what you're expecting people to decide without knowing what they're agreeing to. I would never send my child somewhere without knowing what the environment is like. This is not simply black and white, online versus in-person. I know I'm not the only parent in the district that feels this way, and that there's not enough information to make a decision at this time. Thank you. Okay, um, so thank you for your comments. As you can see, there's still a lot of questions, and hopefully, we can answer the majority of, or a lot of these tonight. Um, I do know, and I've heard, we've been receiving lots of emails, and so we're gonna hope we can get to as many of these as we can as we move through this agenda. So we're gonna move on to our consent agenda for tonight, and we only have two things on there. Um, we have the Panther Stadium Light Replacement Project Change Order with John Regir, and Certified and Classified Personnel Reports with Becky Major.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Matthew, a second by Tina. All those in favor? That is seven zero. Okay, next up, under reports, um, report five A is our return to learn plan for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year with Heather Bohati.
Good evening, Heather Bohati Superintendent. Um, along with me tonight, we do have some other individuals, um, that will, um, be, are either joining or will be joining um, to help with the conversation this evening. Just as the patrons shared, there are lots of questions. We realize there's a lot of questions from our families. Um, we recognize there's lots of questions from staff, and we will work through those to, um, get those answered. There are also things that we have to continue to examine and work together as we move through, because we are also finding there's many, um, moving parts, I will say, um, as people are weighing in and providing new direction. Um, just within this last week, um, receiving different direction as a district and district leadership team, and working together as a whole team with our principals. Um, trying to take, if you wanna say, our latest information that we have to make decisions and to bring forward at this time. So, um, tonight with this, I'd like to, um, say who will be, um, who is on the call to help answer questions too, um, and resources as we go along. But we do have, um, Dr. Alvarado, and we appreciate, uh, Dr. Alvarado being on, local physician, um, on the call that has been, um, taking a look. Thank you for joining us and for your time that you have spent, um, and we'll be providing some information and a resource, um, in a little bit. Um, we also have Calvin Ryder, our school district, um, attorney, and from the legal aspect on the call, uh, this evening. We may have someone join from the Kansas Association of School Boards. If so, I will introduce them when they join. And then, um, we anticipate, um, Stephanie, um, Coolman from the work group, the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kansas. Um, she's split between board meetings tonight, um, so we hope that she will be, um, joining us, um, a little bit later this, um, this evening. Um, we have posted on, for our viewers that are joining us on YouTube Live, um, we as also posted, we will be going over what's called the Safety Security Logistics Plan. This is referenced also in the, um, our learning plan, uh, so they go hand in hand. But we also, the work that went into this, building principals initially sat down and said, let's take a look, and what does this look like with topics that are coming up, and those same things that the patrons were saying that, hey, we would like to know, what does it look like? And what is it going to look like in our schools on mask, um, hand washing, um, in the hallways? Um, tonight is resources that we have, um, at the various levels. Um, we have Sandy Rusher from the elementary that will be representing with principals. If you have questions. Um, we have, um, Jeff Smith and Clint Shipley at the middle school level, and Mr. Hamlin at the high school level. If you have specifics on, hey, what will this look like, um, also on the call as a resource. So we're gonna reference that document, um, that was also sent, um, to board members, um, today. And so you would have a, a chance to look, and as we posted this info, information, but we are showing this on the screen. We actually are going to start bottom up, so I'm gonna have, um, whoever's driving go to the bottom of the screen, and we will go up. The first piece I will say about this, you can see we have, um, um, before we scroll down, we are, we have it divided with the high level, moderate level, and low level, um, so people can see. So high level are like, are mandated, that could be, um, either state or local. Um, it could be board, wherever those mandates and saying, this is how it needs to be, would be in that high level column. Uh, more moderate, as you move down, um, you can see low and clear to the side there, you can see operations as normal. Much like when we started school last year, we were clear over in operations and normal column. So with that, yes, um, heading back down to the bottom, we are going to start with different, with these various categories that see at the left. So what does drop off and pick up look like when we say this? So on there, we're expecting in specific information will come out. If you wanna say, um, for each school, because every school has different amount of entrances. Um, they have different amount of buses that come to the school. Um, but what you can expect consistent district-wide, that there's gonna be a high structure. So right now, we would say when people drop off and stuff, it's, it was a very different from last year to this year. We're looking at a very high structure for drop off and pickup of students. We are saying to give you some specific, like, no gatherings outside of school, so kids are not congregating, um, after they get out. We're looking at social distancing, keeping that six feet, um, apart from others as we're clearing out for, um, the school day. Um, in visiting with, um, Mr. Kippenberger, President, it sounds like we wanna stop after each one of these. If you have specific questions, we will answer. If no questions, then we'll go ahead and go on to the next area, which would be lunch.
Okay, were there any questions on just the drop off and pickup? Tina.
Heather, I know you said that other plans will be coming forth as we go through, but, um, so just a quick question, like, for instance, in the middle school drop off, now they drop off, they go into the gym and wait for the bell ring to go to homeroom. Are they going to go to their homeroom straight away, or how, how are we planning to do that?
Sure, and we have our middle school principals on that could answer that one.
Yeah, Clint Shipley at, uh, Principal Derby Middle School. Right now, I think, uh, both middle schools are working through, um, the general idea of having designated entrances for student groups. Uh, could, right now, we'd be looking and thinking D M S at one entry per grade level, but we would bypass the gym and have students report directly to class.
And Derby Middle, Derby North is looking at a similar plan. We don't want the kids all congregating at the beginning or at the entrance, so we'll be coming in four or five entrances, more if we have the staff for it. Um, so that way, they go right to the classroom and won't ever be in large groups. It will also make traffic, um, a lot better. And we're looking at doing it for the entire year, so we don't have structure, delete structure, go back to a structure. So, so, uh, we've got it, we've got a great plan, I believe, that will let us do anything on this list.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, any others on that? I don't see any, I said one, um, as far as the that elementary school, that's the only kinda ones I have personal experience with, but, uh, you know, a lot of us walk up and pick up our kids, drop them off there, um, outside the doors. I mean, at Park Hills in the circle. I mean, is that something that we're going to recommend against having all those, have parents out there waiting in front of the school? Or, or do we know how we're, what we would do with something like, with that kind of situation? And except, I know a lot of us will sit out there and kinda wait within of each day.
Right, this is Sandy Rusher, elementary representative. Um, we've spoken a lot as a group about that, and I think, one, we would just first ask any parents that are walking up, um, to pick their kiddos up, because it's, most of the times, they're doing that for a safety precaution, getting the kids through the parking lot. We would just ask families that they do not, uh, gather together. They kinda stay in one area, and the, and the child know that that's where they're gonna meet their mom or dad or, or whatnot. Um, so we would take students directly to them and not let them gather in big groups.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think that's all the questions on the drop off.
The next one is lunch. Hmm, and the big one with lunch right now is looking in complying with and, and staying current with what does the health department say about lunch, so that's everything from those gathering sizes and looking at it at the time when school would start, and then making sure that we're complying, um, with the, um, students and spacing coming through. So there's things that have been looked at regarding, um, lunch service. Um, and I believe Mr. Jones is on the call too, if you have, um, questions regarding, um, the food service, food service area or principals.
Okay, any questions on the lunch program? Um, I don't see everybody on the screen here, I don't think. Andy, go ahead.
So I guess maybe it would be helpful to just, if you could go through elementary, middle school, high school, just synopsis of how that would look, understanding it could change from the health department, but, I mean, are, are kids gonna be eating by themselves? Are they, is there three to a table? Is it spread out? I think that would be helpful, just overview information, if that's possible.
Sure, again, this is Sandy Rusher, um, elementary rep. Um, so I just kind of walked through some of the ideas with Nate last week, who works under Martha Lawson. Um, we've talked about a gamut of ideas, whether lunches brought down to the room. If we're in a real high structured environment, maybe we deliver the lunches to the room and, um, account for lunches that are purchased and turn that information sheet back into the office so that it all can be. So that it all can be the logistics counted for. We would, of course, love for students to be able to go to the lunchroom, so we're looking at ways to spread them out or only put a limited few at a table. Maybe they're all facing in one direction, so. We're looking at ways to make it where they can be around their friends, maybe talk at a distance, because it is lunch and eating for kids is such a social situation. But if we do need to go into the highest structure, then we can do that in the rooms. Teachers may be covering that and then more coverage provided to that staff member at another time.
Mrs. Rusher, could I ask a quick follow up question? So it sounds like there's still some question as to how that would look, I guess, is the health department providing specific guidance today? That we think might change, and that's why we're kind of still trying to figure that out, or. I guess what is, what is the guidance as of today, if a parent's trying to figure out how lunch would look based on what we know? Understanding it might change in the next, you know, few weeks.
Sure, absolutely, and yes, that's kind of why we're holding right now, I do believe Becky Mater, correct me if I'm wrong, but the gathering is forty-five. So we may have to structure, make maybe first grade, if their grade level is above forty-five, we might have to have two slots. When first grade goes to the lunchroom, we are limiting visitors, so we can. That helps us account for just the students that need to be in the room at that time, a very clear in pattern. I know we, we are in the process of purchasing lanyards, so all of the kids lunch cards will be on their lanyard. Which can therefore just be scanned as they go through, so the students are not touching the keypad as they go through, as they have in the past. We just scan them real quick, they would probably be kind of like we're thinking in the bus situation, they'd probably go to the furthest. Table or wherever we're putting them and then placed back and then the direct opposite, opposite of that we release. So they would release from the top of the room and then move back, so that we can keep kids from going crisscross of one another.
Awesome, Mr. Watkins, we do have on any of these topics, Stephanie Coleman, thank you for joining us. And she was with the work group of Kansas COVID work group for kids, so we appreciate Stephanie being on, so feel free Stephanie. Working through, if you guys had any guidance to, feel free to chime in.
And if I could just ask one more follow up and then I'll stop. As far as, so, so it sounds like as of today, if we were to start school tomorrow, would, would lunches be in classrooms? I mean, would be considered this a higher? Level that we'd be operating at, and if so, would be, would we be having lunch in classrooms, is that kind of what I'm hearing, or? How does that, what are your thoughts, I guess, if we had to make the decision today?
I think right now, what I would say on that is, we know the schedule's out a few weeks. So right now, I don't have an answer for you, you know, if we were saying right today. Haven't looked at that at this point with today, so. That is one, I think you have to, what I will say is, we would consult the health department and look at our current circumstances to make that decision. Regarding it, there's also contractual things to work out with that and then schedules, you know, to work out. We would make sure no matter what, our students are safe regarding, regarding it, but to answer today. Regarding lunches and exactly how that would look today. We are anticipating, that's why it has down there being flexible, is when it gets closer, we will take a look and have specifically how that looks. We're just kind of giving you the gamut, making sure we have all those things in place to be able to pivot one way or another with lanyards and making sure. With signs on floors and, and, and various options that are available to do it. Of what that would, what that would look like, we also need to work with our staff. When they get back on board, and that's where we're hoping to get with calendars and plans and that kind of stuff, to have those conversations. About what is workable, because we need to have an memorandum of understanding regarding that and make sure our staff is on board. Is that look like what in the classroom versus what other spaces we have available? Have we had numerous conversations regarding it, definitely regarding that? Have we brainstormed various things right now? Think and feel free when we get to the high school with Mr. Hamlin, we could do the lecture hall and other places, yes, definitely. But until we have those conversations with staff, I think we are to explain, not prepared to be able to say a hundred percent what that looks like.
And I just, I think parents are just trying to get a picture, what it will look like, and it makes it difficult if we don't. You know, as of today, if we, if, if we, if we can't tell them at least what we think it looks like as today, knowing it may change. So I know I've gotten questions on how lunch looks and hesitation about eating in classrooms and stuff like that, so. Again, just, just feedback, and that's why I'm asking these specific questions.
Of course, and we've talked the same thing, I think, for a parent, if they're looking at a more restrictive would be in the classroom. And least restrictive would be in the lunchroom. One thing we have talked about lunch, and we'll get up there, it goes hand in hand with visitors. That if you had to ask the question today about people coming in with visitors, and that goes again hand in hand. But we would say that no visitors would be allowed in the lunchroom as of today. So parents, we would be on the most restrictive piece of that, and then parents would need to make an appointment. And they would be asked screening questions regarding that, but we would not have outside visitors as of today in for lunch. So if that helps, we would be operating on the further more restrictive if you were asking us today.
I think that does help, so thank you.
So from a middle school perspective, we've gone through and scouted out different places in the building where we think we could put, you know, groups of forty-five. Right now, we think we can put, under the most restrictive circumstances, we could put two people per table in the cafeteria. And still maintain approximately six feet of distance between them. So that would entail a student services staff supervising groups of forty-five, probably three groups of forty-five, and that would use all of the. Each administrator, counselor, social worker and psych would probably have to be involved in, in that. Depending on what support we're able to negotiate with teachers and how that kind of agreement works out. Students would line up, we've talked about how we would work the queue. And, and take the line out in the hall and make markings on the floor so that we can distance kids out in the lines, they'd go through the line. Kids that had IDs would, that had their IDs would go through one line and just scan the ones that didn't have their IDs, then would have to go through a, a different line. That would have to be manually done for them, so trying to keep the bulk of it moving fast and then making exceptions for the ones that need that extra. Support, so kids would get their lunches, they'd be walked to whatever location, we have several large rooms. We've looked at our K eight room, we've looked at the bleachers in the gym. So we will get a variety of places, some of it will depend on what kind of meals we're offering. If it's more of a box lunch or sack lunch kind of thing, that gives us a little bit more flexibility to use some spaces, if it does, if we don't need to provide tables. If we're doing traditional hot lunch, then we'll have to look at setting up tables if we're not able to use classrooms or not able to have enough supervision. For classrooms, so it's kind of, some of it will come down to manpower issue, which I understand you know, still some dominoes to fall to have a better idea what that might look like.
And at Derby North, we're looking at something very similar, there are some, some limiting factors. There are rules about times when students are supposed to have their lunch between this time and that time. And student self-service may be a thing of the past because of, of obvious issues, so working through those. We've also got the breakfast issue. We're thinking now that we'll have the, the students get a grab and go breakfast as far as that part of their eating, eating needs. So again, our job is to come up with scenarios for high, medium and low of the risk, or the risk group. So whenever we're told which one we start under, we're ready to go. But one thing I do know is we can't social distance right now in that way with a full building. That'd be very, very difficult, we couldn't do it in the cafeteria, we'd have to utilize all those other spaces, so. So if people are looking for a normal lunchroom, if that's what they're worried about, that's not what they'll see. So there'll be numerous changes and it'll be, it'll be well thought out, but it won't be like it was in January.
We're just not going to eat at the high school, no, I'm kidding. Okay, Derby High School, I'd give you a little idea of how we handle lunch previously, we have five lunches. The building is set to eat by hallways, so we already have in place a, a plan. Or a routine where certain parts of the building are released to the lunchroom. A big building affords us some, some opportunity. People are going to have to accept that the old rules that food stays in the commons are going to have to go by the wayside for a while. We plan to use some of the, the technology that we have in our building. We will not have kids eat lunch in classrooms, there are some obvious reasons, already mentioned in the negotiated agreement, things like that. But we want to be able to see kids at all times. This last two years, we've had the, the blessing of having a new surveillance system installed in Derby High School. So at this point, the plan would be first lunch, for example. Hoping that there are limits on the menu items, students would be able to obtain their meal in three different points. At different points throughout the commons and or building. Pretty much the entire building, students will be allowed to move, they'll be encouraged and. It will be stressed to please socially distance, we can move some of our cafeteria tables to different areas throughout the building. So that students would have the opportunity to sit, not necessarily on the floor, but in some situations, they may prefer that. But again, by using all of these common spaces, we do have the ability with our surveillance cameras to be able to keep eyes on all of those spaces. There'll be a whole lot of trash cans in places that we didn't have in the past. And one thing about the high school kids is they have this amazing ability to, to go where they want to go. So we're not going to have to lead them to spaces as you will at some of the other levels. So will it be challenging, sure, it will be challenging, but certainly not one that I, I, I am confident that we can, can address that. And I'll take any questions about it.
Okay, Andy, you good?
Yes, thank, thank you all for just going through that, that's very helpful.
Okay, were there any other questions? Good lunch. All right, not seeing any, okay, we'll move on to events.
All right, with events, as stated on there, we will be following again those local health department and. Guidance, so specifically as we have some different organizations listed, we'll take with Kasia with sports. Right now, where Kasia's, they had sent out an email. To area representatives, it says normally that fall season's just was scheduled for August seventeenth. They have now sent out and are conducting a survey. To see what that means and pending information coming out, so at this point with what that means. From Kasia, we are still waiting for that information. Right now, what we're looking at overall with events is we're encouraging. That first nine weeks of planning as many events that we would. Not be able to have, if you want to say, so for instance, music programs and, and other things like that is putting those off. And not holding those, that first nine weeks is what we are looking at, so trying to limit, not saying we wouldn't have any. But unless we had to have, we would plan on not having events that first nine weeks. And encouraging, if we needed to do something, it would be more virtual if we felt we needed to do that. So that's where we're at with events at this point, again, more information from sports and Kasia. Of what that means, and we would follow up since they were still surveying and gathering information. And then other events at the elementary level, really working for evening events, types of things, eliminating that the first nine weeks.
Okay, any questions or comments on the events? Just trying to find everyone, I don't see any, okay, we can move on to hallways.
Okay, hallways, and we'll go through this, what it looks like at each of the levels again, so you guys can picture that, but. Making sure we have a coordinated plan regarding. A coordinated plan regarding transitions, really taking a look, is there other ways that kids can move, so different routes? And there are some buildings that you would be able to have hallways one way type of thing, could we do that? Or even practice social distancing where at all possible, so looking at that. Or coordinating, you know, how many kids instead of having everybody out in the hall at one time, so we'll go through each of the level. This time, we'll start at high school of what the plan is in the hallways. We also see Mr. Liston had worked and we talked about at the last Board of Education meeting. Of having different markings for floors and other things about spacing, and we have purchased those for all buildings. At elementary, middle school and high school.
All right, I believe you said high school first, did you not?
That would be fine, we'll go in reverse this time.
Okay, there we go, the kids have to walk forward, but we'll talk anyway. Again, at the high school, the size works to our advantage. Our hallways are, are extremely wide, we do not plan at this time to have one-way directional hallways. We do plan to have clearly designated separation, and we will preach from day one, stay to the right. When it comes to the stairwells, however, we do have the main stairwell, we are going to designate that it is one way down. We have four other stairwells throughout the building that would allow students on the lower level to move to the upper level. Again, size, really, it, it helps us, affords us some opportunities here. A transition that is at the end of the day, even though you already spoke about drop offs, we do. Plan to have perhaps just by minutes, even seconds, seconds can make a difference. A stagger dismissal, and we will encourage students to just simply exit the building through the closest door to their classroom. If they have to walk around the building a bit to get to their parking lot or to the buses, then it's outside, fresh air. But that's basically the, the plan for movement of kids at the high school.
We're making some more substantial changes at middle school. The first thing we're going to do is we're not going to assign lockers. If we assign kids lockers, they will, they will use those lockers, so we're going to ask them to put all their things in their backpacks. That's a real change for middle school, we've not allowed backpacks before, but we're going to do that, that way, that'll make those hallways not as crowded. Like Mr. Hamlin, we're, we can't do one way on our hallways, but we can, we're going to put dividing lines there, train them from day one. And have them stay to the right. And then as far as passing periods, at this time, I don't plan on having separate passing periods, but what we'll do is we'll leave the classroom. Especially now when we have to have the hands washed and sanitized every hour, as I leave the classroom, we're going to ask them to use a hand sanitizer. And then we'll release them one at a time to go to the next class. The bathroom breaks will happen during, during the class period, so not everybody's trying to use that small facility at the same time. So that'll take administrators in the hallways while teachers are cleaning up their rooms, so we've got a great plan though, and we know we can do it.
The other thing that we're looking on, at on top of some of the things that Derby North is looking at is having signs on the bathroom that might be color coded. But depending on what level we are to just remind students, how many students can be in the bathroom at a time and try and limit that somewhat, so. If we're in a high restriction, you know, we might restrict it to one or two, if we're in a medium restriction, it might be a couple more than that, and then below restriction, a couple more than that. But trying to use some signage on the walls to help remind students about what level we're in and what level restriction. And then just spending a lot of time in, in science and math class, helping them understand that what six feet looks like and what three feet looks like.
Real, sorry, saying real quick, I, I think Matthew had a question for the middle school, it'd like.
So yeah, I did, just a quick question, something you said about really releasing kids one at a time. I hope we're going to relax our tardiness policy, get into the next class, okay.
We would.
That's all I need, thanks.
Many of their classes are on the same hallway, but when you're talking about getting to PE. But in PE, we're also looking at not utilizing the locker rooms, so there's not a place in Derby North I couldn't get to in three minutes. But we'll be very leaning with that unless we have a reason to believe we should get a little tougher with an individual or two that needs it.
Well, I just, I know your passing periods are fairly short, and if you're doing anything to slow that down, even giving them a dab of hand sanitizer could. Be a difference, so just as long as we're not penalizing anybody, I'm happy.
Oh, sure, and that last kid leaving will be a minute or so behind the first one to leave, so we would definitely take that into account.
Thank you.
Sorry, me too. Okay, Sandy, you want to go ahead and?
Mr. Watkins, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I just had a, yes, if I could, please. Um, Mr. Smith, I think you had mentioned, maybe I misunderstood, so kids will use the bathroom during class and not between classes? Is that what you said?
Yes, uh, if we said everybody use the bathroom between classes, there really would be no way to, to, uh, to control that. We have so many bathrooms, we're going to get them where they're going, and then release them in, in small groups as they need that. So, so, um, that's a real gathering spot, and there's no way that we can keep social distance, um, in a regular bathroom passing period. So that's our, that's our plan to start, and we'll reevaluate it as we go. But right now, especially if we're half the kids or all the kids, there'd be no way to do that safely. If we were at, say, a quarter of the kids in a hybrid, might be possible, but if it was half the kids or more, it, it would be impossible to keep social distanced in there.
Does, does that pose issues with kids being out of class and missing subjects? I, I guess I'm just curious how that will work if kids are missing class.
It will, but my, one of my first job is to make sure they're safe, and I, I make sure they're safe and everybody has what they need, and, and we'll get, we'll get the learning in there, but if they're not safe, then the learning won't matter.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, as for the elementary setting, um, elementary and hallways, it kind of has always been a starting place for us. So, um, as you might see in some of the other elementaries, you'll see a lot of, um, bubbles and ducktails, and we're already getting kids in a line and going one direction. It's just kind of a natural thing for us at the elementary level. Um, so in talking with my colleagues, markings, definitely like, uh, some of the other principals said, one-way on one side, the opposite on the other. Um, taking advantage of, of alternative routes. So there really may be times where a class gets to go outside and get a breath of fresh air as they're coming into the building, and then following up with the hand washing that goes, um, into the changing of spaces or whatnot. And then I think as building principals, we can also look at the schedule and put just a bit of a, um, all, like a window in there where one class is coming into PE and what the other class moves out so, um, that they don't go in and out the door at the same time. I think we'll look at, um, keeping as many of our doorways in one side and out the other, um, so that we don't have kids crossing. Um, piggybacking off of what Mr. Smith said, um, a lot of our classrooms, some kindergarten classrooms have restrooms in them, um, and so we will also be very diligent about who's in the restroom and, um, having visited Mr. Smith's building recently, a clear posting of when that bathroom was last cleaned. And so it's very visual and, and very targeted, um, so that we can keep that sanitary and, and ready to go for all of us.
Okay, um, I did have one quick follow-up overall on this. Um, a lot, a lot of the talk is, you know, if we're doing most restrictive, moderately restrictive, this will affect how we, you know, do hallways or restrooms for that matter. What is determining that difference? So how, how, what will make you be most restrictive, moderately restrictive? I guess that's going to be something that people are going to really want to know.
Sure. Um, with the different, um, variables that we have, I would say on any of these, um, is consulting with, again, Sedgwick County Health is a great resource. I know right now, Ms. Sealy, it is, I'd say daily, multiple times, lots of questions in trying to consult. So I think we need to look at where are we at, um, when we look at with Sedgwick County, where, um, and, and what is the guidance that we're receiving at the time, um, in these different, um, particular areas? And then us as a district leadership team, having those conversations, same thing with element, with elementary principals would be norming together, so you can expect would be, um, that consistently, whatever level at all, elementary, middle school and high school will all be at the same one, but middle schools are norming together. You look at then the elementary and then the high school, what that looks like. So to answer your question, working closely with Sedgwick County Health, um, Department, um, again, we have some resources. Um, I don't know if any of our, um, um, Ms. Coleman or, um, Dr. Alvarado has any additional information, but feel free at any time if you guys have anything else to add on those. I know they've been, um, on calls and with superintendents, um, and, and helped provide guidance to from a medical perspective.
Okay, um, thank you.
This is Stephanie Coleman.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to say, one of the things we've asked, the, so I'm Stephanie Coleman, I'm a physician, I'm, um, leading a work group called the, um, Kansas COVID Work Group for, for kids, and we've put out some school recommendations. Um, one of the, one of the things we have asked Sedgwick County and KDHE is to align metrics, um, in the community around, um, the rate of spread in the community around, um, hospital capacity, things of that nature, to help, um, guide schools on this. Um, so I know all the schools are in their kind of low, moderate and high-risk zones, and we haven't really, um, gauged the health, or the health department hasn't really come out with a set of metrics. And so we've been asking for that, um, just to help kind of guide the schools with that information.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I guess, follow on even to my original question, and maybe we can answer that, but where we are right now? Um, and I, I know we're not starting school right now, but I guess that's, as, as people sit here and want to, and it's going to be that way all the way up this chart, I was there and tried to decide how, decisions on how to enroll or, or when to enroll. It's just this, the unknown is, it's very daunting for a lot of families and, um, it, I understand, um, things are going to change, and they've changed so much in just the last couple of days, but, but I feel like at some point we need to say, you know, here's where we are, here's where we are going to be. If we start school now, we're doing this. If, if things change, we get more mandates or guidance changes, we'll, we'll, we'll work with that guidance and we'll change how we're operating, but, but I just worry about us can, if we continue to say, well, we're going to look at that later and we'll get, we'll get back to you later. I, 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 at some point, I want to just, just, let's put out where we are right now, and then we will adjust on the fly, you know, as, as we go, because we're going to have to, it's not going to go away.
But hopefully on those areas, drop-off pickup, you got a picture of what that will look like immediately. Lunch, we are needing to come back because we need to have some conversations. There's things that impact with a master contract before we can answer that. Events, hopefully that answers, because we are straightforward, no events the first nine weeks, waiting on Kasia. And then hallways, hopefully you gathered, and if there's specific questions that we can answer at the middle school, elementary, high school level, we would do that on hallways, because I feel we have a very much a plan in those three areas. The only one right now is with lunch, there's some unknowns right now with that piece, to be able to say specifically what that looks like.
Yeah, and I think I'm meaning more towards like, because we're, a lot of the talk is, if we're, if we're moderate or for most or for least, what are we though? What are we right now? Just, I mean, that, that's kind of, I guess my question is like, where, where are we right now? Um, so that would be a gauge people could use. Okay, so right now, the schools are, are this way. But I, I know it's, it could, it could change, and it will change, but.
If I had to do that right now on hallways, we would be at the, um, top category with high.
Okay. Um, Mark, did you have a question, I think?
Yeah, I did. Um, I've heard it a few times tonight, there's some things with, that concern lunch that involve the master contract. Could you expand on that? What are we talking about? What, what are we? What parts of the contractor are we worried about?
And I'm looking, Joel's also on there, and it's regarding lunch supervision piece of it. So we are working, um, we'll be working with them, but under, um, KSA 72-2217, um, it talks about specifically shall be included but not limited to services such as coaching, supervising, directing and assisting extracurricular activities, chaperoning, ticket-taking, lunchroom supervision and other similar related activities. So essentially, you know, we need to have conversation and stuff, how does this look, um, with it? And, um, again, um, we received that information today, so more to come.
If I could just also jump in, if that's okay, on the MOU piece of that, um, another part is just the definition of a duty-free lunch, and then also just looking broadly at one that lunch could occur typically, a teacher's duty-free lunch is when their students are eating lunch. But if for some reason, um, teachers are monitoring students in their classroom while their students are eating lunch, they would not be able to have lunch at that time. So that's the, another piece of that.
Um, Becky Mader, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, if I could just weigh in for a second on some of those decisions and logistics, the very specific details that need to be worked out. I think it's very important that, um, it was mentioned earlier that we get our staff back, we get our teachers back, our classified staff will be coming back. Our principals weigh heavily on their building leadership teams on the input from these educators who know the, the day-to-day, the details. They have amazing ideas, and while we have this guidance here in this document that kind of shows an outline of what we're doing with collaboration with our local physicians, with our health department, with guidance that we're given from different organizations, then we can work out those details with so many minds put together, um, with the best interest of our students always at the forefront of those decisions. So I know, I, trust me, like you, Mr. Kippenberger, I, I want to know now, that's, that's going to give me a lot of peace if I know what's happening now, but I also know that we're very excited to get our teachers back and to team and collaborate with our principals and with our staff in order to work out these, these fine details and logistics.
Sure, yeah, um, I agree, Becky and everyone else, um, and that, and I think we kind of have the same, you know, we all want to, to, everyone, you know, is working super hard to get everybody back the best we can and be as safe as we can. Um, you know, and, and I guess, wh- while the plan is, while you have a plan you guys are working towards and, and, and whatever, it's the, 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 the community, the families are the ones that, 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 you know, that we hear from a lot, and, and, and we're, we're also, you know, we are the families too, and the, the questions, just, just the unknown is just so difficult. I mean, you know, depending upon what happens tonight, school could start in a few weeks or, or a month or so. I just, it's just, um, trying to get a good feeling as to where the district sits right now, what I, I think is helpful. I mean, and everyone knows things can change, I mean, they changed, what was that? Okay, things can change as they did in March. I mean, we, we out of the blue, you know, school shut down. So, so they can change. I just think, you know, just knowing, trying, trying to get some more of these little things, like it, like, like for lunch example, I think someone said, is my kid going to sit at their desk, you know, six feet apart from everybody else and eat lunch by themselves? You know, I, I guess those are just kind of the details that I think some people are hoping to get out of this meeting, and it doesn't sound like we're probably going to get it out of this one, but we just need to make sure that we are, um, yeah, at, at some point, going to, going to give a better picture of where we feel we are at a set point in time, knowing that things can change.
Right, and our, our principals, I think, we have had discussions, it's not as if we haven't been working on this and, and trying to, to think things through, and that was one of the reasons why we did ask our principals to, to be here to field those kinds of questions. So we'll, we'll do our best to give you as much, as much as we can without tying ourselves into, um, something so specific that, that we may.
I really feel we're able to, and we have them to give you, give you, the board and our families that are watching tonight, a pretty good idea, you know what I mean, of the varying pieces of it? So if we need to go back and revisit drop-off pickup, um, events or hallways, the only one right now that we're not able to because of some of those factors that have come in and we need to work through is lunch at this point.
Agreed, yeah, and I think it was more just happened, even, I think you kind of, you did kind of answer it, just more knowing when, when we're going to move between what we consider most and mine. I guess it's something you'll talk to health department on, I, I didn't realize we talked to them on, on every, um, we asked them on every aspect of, of these, of this chart, you know, e- even with hallway movement, you know, if, if they got, give us guidance on that, then that's, um, that's good to know. But, but I guess that was ma- maybe my question is, how do we move between these charts? And then where, where are we right now? We, like, and you did answer, if we were right now, we would be in the most restrictive, it sounds like. So, um, we'll see what happens in, you know, and when, before school starts, things will definitely change. Um, but I do think, looks like, Matthew, did you have another, did you have a question?
No, I was just going to restate that we're, we're following all the guidance from Sedgwick County right now, that's what staff's been doing, and we've been the most restrictive. So I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're, we keep rehashing that. We're under restrictive as of right now. And when we get to the point where we can vote on anything tonight, that's to give staff the leeway, we're starting the most restrictive and following the guidance from Sedgwick County, period. And then we'll back off when they allow us to back off. So I think it's just giving our staff and our administration the leeway and the trust to do their job. I think they're doing a great job so far. That's all, it was just a comment, it wasn't really a question, so.
All right, Andy?
I guess I would just respond to that. I mean, from my understanding, there are several exemptions that would apply for schools. So when we get into some of these details like hallways and lunch, stuff like that, my understanding is technically we could be exempted, um, on some of them, not all of them, I understand that. So, but I, I also think it's our job as, as district leadership and, and the board to help paint a picture of how we think it looks today, even, even if we think it may change, because whether we like it or not, we're getting tons of questions as to specifics, and people are making decisions based on the specific. So if we say, yet to be determined, I think we're going to lose people. Um, I think there's people making decisions, um, based on our meeting tonight. So I would recommend that we try to be as specific as possible. We understand, I think everybody understands that if things change, um, if there are requirements on particular things, that we can make those changes, but people really want to try to paint the picture, um, tonight. I mean, for example, on the, the bathroom thing, I, to me, I'd like, like us to look at alternatives to kids going to the bathroom during class. Um, I don't know what that is, but, um, you know, that's, that's one thing I would have a concern with. So I think there's, we've got to try to fill in the details as much as possible, uh, tonight, I think.
I will mention about, um, I think it's important for the public and parents and even board, um, that has information as we're, um, making decisions. So to get these recommendations here, um, I know you see one nice sheet of paper, and that's how we want people to do that, but there's really some important pieces that have gone in, and I want to go back to KSDE and the Navigating Change Document, um, where Kansas educators, and we had educators too that served on that, but across the state to come through and, and work on what are recommendations as staff are having these challenges and, and administrators across the state of Kansas, what are some best practices and things that they would want, um, to happen? So when we look at just what the middle school has said about lockers and that piece, and right now the high school doesn't use lockers. So when we look at our secondary schools in that piece, they are picking up, we are picking up some of those best practices. Restrooms was one of those, it's in those documents. And although it's not, you know, we would love everybody just to go to the restroom, but it does have challenges in knowing, um, where it is. So I do think the piece is important to know, the navigating change document is there. There's also another piece of it is, as having some of these work groups and support groups having that are going, that, that the, um, um, families need to know that are taking place. It's not just a call here and there, but it's hours of time that is being spent with local health, um, professionals getting, um, questions answered as we have on here, um, with Dr. Alvarado, and, um, our other resource that we have on here is, is using people we have both locally and, um, with groups that are put together to help bring these recommendations forward. We will try to be as specific and willing to have any conversations for families that are viewing tonight, if you're kind of wondering what could this be? We will try to be as specific as we can, but again, probably the only area at this point we're not able to, and that's because of information again we receive, we are not, meaning we as district leadership and we as a district don't want to promise or overpromise anything that we don't have 100% type of thing worked out at this point. So I hope that provides for our families watching, there's many different aspects that have come together to work to make these recommendations and cipher through. Legals, another piece of it, um, with that. And at that, I will stand, I know, um, Dr. Alvarado is now, or do you want to wait till further on? Because I know you had an opportunity to take a look at this plan.
I can talk now. Um, I, I speak with a lot of, uh, parents as well as teachers that expressed a lot of anxiety about returning to the classroom. that expressed a lot of anxiety about returning to the classroom. Uh, and I understand that. Um, I, I believe that the guidelines that you have at the high level, moderate level and low level provide a very good roadmap for, for how you would mitigate risk. Um, obviously everything we do decreases your risk of being exposed or getting the disease. It is not eliminated. So when families are considering, you know, well, I'm afraid my kid's gonna eat lunch with someone or they're not going to enforce this or that, they have to take into account their own, their family's own risk. Is there someone at home with a immunocompromis- in immunocompromised state or with an autoimmune disorder? And so, you know, they should really, um, weigh their risks, not on what the school is doing. The school is gonna mitigate as much as possible. But do you need to additionally mitigate by staying out of the school? Um, I think for the vast majority of healthy, uh, families and kids, um, the risk of going to school is in a group setting, uh, poses a little bit more risk. But if you look at the numbers and if you're really into data, you'll see that the risk, um, is, is fairly low. It's just you don't want to be that, the one person. Um, so the school has to provide guidelines for, for all things and they will on the ground, kind of building the plane as we fly it, so to speak, and we can't, um, you know, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Uh, we've developed a lot of really good find, good guidelines. Are they gonna be perfect? Well, no, because nothing's perfect. But, um, if you know that and you're willing and your kids are ready to get back, maybe there's some harm from keeping your kid out of the school setting. Maybe your kid, you feel like your kids, you know, well, they didn't really study online. I know, I know mine didn't, didn't do very well with that, that format. Um, if you feel you can't be there to teach all day and, and, and they're slipping behind, or maybe they weren't keeping up in, in general, especially in the springtime when kids tend to slack off, they're not gonna do any better at home with you. There might be some risk benefits that the families have to weigh and that's an individual decision. And there's no right answer. There's no wrong answer. Um, like I said, the school's doing a great job providing a level of safety for everyone that mitigates risk. It does not eliminate risk 100%. Um, so I, I can cede the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Kippenberger, would you like us to move on to transportation at this point?
Yeah. Were there any other questions or comments on this before we move on? Okay. Yeah. Let's go ahead to transportation.
Okay. With transportation, um, and this is an area we can be very clear about, about where we would start. And we would be again in that high level of category at this point. Um, anytime on the bus that we could have windows open, we would do that. Um, right now our buses would be running our current numbers. Um, we are not looking at, um, reducing numbers on buses. But we would say they would be temperature checked as they get ready to enter. So what that would look like before they enter on a bus, they would have a temperature check, um, done. We are planning to have some aids, um, and help on the bus to provide those. We would be looking at loading, um, in that most restrictive category back to front. So going clear to the back, walking so kids aren't passing everybody as they're going on and then releasing front to back. Um, and then also on the bus, um, mask would be required. And you can see the other areas of what we're looking at as they go down, um, in categories. So we'll stand for any questions. And I know Mr. Jones is also on the call that we can try to, um, get those answered for you.
Okay, Dina?
Heather, I just want clarification. Once they're temperature checked to get on the bus, will they then be temperature checked to get into the building? Or are we considered that their temperature checked for the day and they're done?
That is a good question and we have talked about it. That is the temperature check and they're done for the day. And that will be very, very helpful when we started running numbers, um, um, at especially those secondary buildings.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Or any other questions or comments on this one? Seeing done. Okay, we can move on to visitors. Oh, Andy?
I guess mine, mine is more in line with temperature checks, um, how we handle those. So are we gonna hit that later? We could just wait till then.
Yeah, that's coupled up here.
Okay, so I'll save it for then.
Um, the next area then is looking at what it looks like with our visitors coming in. We know, um, so with the different categories looking at, so no visitors. And we talked about this a little bit earlier, that parents would need to make an appointment and would be asked screening questions. So what this would look like? If parents had a meeting at school, um, had an IEP meeting or something else, they could come up. That would be, um, an appointment and we would know that parents are coming up to the school. But there is a list of screening questions that the parent would be asked when they come in. And probably asked that, um, I knew Nikki Sealy had been working on those particular screening questions. Um, Nikki, would you be able to share what they could be anticipated to ask when they come up, um, to, um, the school?
Sure. And the ones that we found were suggestions from that KSDE document, um, that they had produced out. And there's four of them. The first one was, do you have a temperature of 100.4 or above? Um, the second one is, do you have symptoms of cough, fever or shortness of breath? Third is, have you visited any of the restricted, restricted travel advisory locations provided on the K, eight, KDHE list within the last 14 days? And then the last one is, have you had close contact with anyone in the past 14 days who has been, um, diagnosed or tested positive with COVID-19? Okay.
So I anticipate to ask, um, to answer the question at this point, um, if we were to open school today, we would be, um, planning to be in the high level, um, area where we would say no visitors allowed at this point. And parents would need to make an appointment, um, and they would be screened as they come in. As those restrictions loosen up, you can see then we have, um, looser categories, um, clear down to visitors allowed, but just asking screening questions. So we'll stand for any questions in that area.
Hey, Dina?
So we're restricting visitors in and we're going to check them, but what if they have to come and check their child out? Have we looked at that? Have we looked at how we're going to allow parents to check their children out, especially if we're doing a drop off? Pickup type situation?
Sure. We have the middle, or high school, middle school. We want to start, um, either elementary, middle school or high school to talk what you guys are considering for that.
This is Sandy with, um, elementary. Mrs. Frenier, we directly, um, addressed this. It would be a change from years past. We would get somewhat of maybe a called a sandwich sign to put out front that would have our phone number. And so unlike years in the past, um, parents could pull into maybe like at Park Hill or Circle Drive, dial that number. Um, most of our parents give us a heads up that they're headed our way and so we can go ahead and get the student to the office. And then, um, an office aide or another helper would get that student, um, watch them as they walk out to the car to check out with their family member who's just called us when they're there in that circle drive. So we are prepared for that situation. Um, that just limits and kind of takes care of it on a, on a, um, kid by kid scenario.
Um, at DMS, we're practically contactless anyway. Um, so parents can wait in the vestibule without having any contact or actually entering the building. They could just enter the vestibule and pick up, um, or drop off. Uh, we would also work on some sort of way to not have to use the sign out charts. We don't have to pass the chart back and forth. And then we would also look at the ability to just send a kid out the door or walk them to the door and then watch them enter their car or something, something along those lines.
At the high school, um, as you would suppose, many of the students transport themselves. So I'll check out that the high school is more parent calling in student than drives. Um, but on occasion, they do come to the building. Uh, usually during the lunch period, that's when we do require our parent to attend. We, like all other buildings, have a vestibule, so we would not allow anyone, they would not pass that. Um, we would have the student directed from the attendance office directly out into the vestibule with their parent and head on to their appointment.
And at Derby North, very similar, um, and like the other buildings, we have, uh, questions we can ask the parents or whoever's picking up them up to ensure we're releasing to the right person. We would just do that over the phone instead of in person. And, uh, we, we've all been asked to have extra rooms available as well in case we have kind of a holding area in case we have multiple kids with COVID or to get them out of the, uh, the nurse's office. They wouldn't be inviting other people. And so we're, we are putting our, our holding room close to an exit so we can have the supervisor of those kids get the kids out without even using the vestibule should we need. So lots of plans for that.
Okay, thank you. That, that was Jeff. You hit on basically what I was going to ask next is how are we going to vet that the person calling in is actually the person that should be taking that child? And we're not just sending a student out the door without verifying who they're leaving with. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, Mark?
Couple of things, the, uh, it, it might be included already, but in the moderate level for visitors, um, adults seem to be a lot more affected by COVID or carriers. I probably would add temp check there if possible with anybody that, at, at some point when we do allow them in. And then, um, if the, that process for temperature checks hasn't been thought out, there's some things there that, uh, we probably ought to talk about. It's, it involves personal information. And when there's somebody that has a temperature of 100, is it, is it first chance? Uh, at the place I work, the, uh, we, we've sometimes had folks show pot or show 100, over 100 degrees, but then just a few minutes later with the oral thermometer, it turns out that their skin was hot because of a heater or the sun or, you know, who knows what. So just some thoughts there. Um, but everybody gets a second chance on that and many of them have been fine, uh, uh, just a couple of minutes later. Just some thoughts.
To piggyback on that, that has been, um, discussed. I know that was something that Ms., um, Sealy, I think, and you want to chime into, but we have had conversations about whether it's kids walking to school or you look at people. Um, uh, you're right that if, if they're hot, they need a few minutes to cool down and trying to talk about what that plan looks like because they very well could be okay. We found that when we first started with latch key, um, was the same thing that, um, they, um, found they couldn't take it in direct sunlight, you know, or out there when it was been so hot out there, um, and, and doing that. So you're exactly right. We have to make, um, provisions to how that would be handled and with the kids coming in.
Okay, any other questions? All right, not seeing any. We can go on to hand washing.
Um, so we were very fortunate. We did, um, with hand sanitizer. Uh, Mr. Jones and his crew there in the operations department, um, got on to with the hand sanitizer early on. And we do have hand sanitizers that will be available. It is here in the district, um, in all the classrooms and it will be located in entrances and other, um, specified spots within the building. So people can readily, um, access these, um, um, sanitation areas that we have. I will also note, because there's information out about with hand sanitizer and their flammable, um, how flammable it is, um, that we have worked with, um, our local, with the fire, um, department. Um, and we have, um, approval of the method that we plan to store and, um, the size of our hand sanitizer that we will have throughout, um, our building. So I think that's important that that has been vetted and that is, um, been approved. And if you have further questions, again, I'm happy, and we'll be happy to answer, um, in those areas. But with the different categories, um, it has been outlined, um, where now this is an area that, um, we are under that students and staff would, um, sanitize hands throughout the day, no less than once every, um, every hour. So again, it'll be important that we have those available and that they can hand sanitize. Um, I am gonna stop so you understand what this would look like, um, when we say within the hour and maybe during those transition times and, um, how that would be at each of those levels, how you envision. So we'll start Sandy at the elementary. What can a parent that's viewing in today or staff that are saying, boy, hand sanitizing, um, once an hour? What can they expect to see?
Okay, um, first I'll just add my own little piece here. As a, a district leader coming back in for my beginning of the year meeting, I was super impressed by what the district leaders already had in district by my first day at work. Um, so if that just, I guess I'm just passing that along that, um, they're really forward thinking this. And I've seen the palettes. We have more hand sanitizer than I've seen in one place in a very long time. Um, and as an elementary principal, I'm super excited about this area of the chart because I think this should just kind of be a standard. Um, we have classrooms with sinks in them and let's put those to use on a daily basis for this matter and have the support of parents that we might step aside for just a minute and wash hands. Um, in the elementary classroom, I think this is easy. Um, we have stations and, or little, we design our lessons in chunks because that's what kids in their attention. And so I can see there's, that's your scheduled activity for that few minutes of the, of the hour is to go over and wash your hands. The sinks are right there. They don't have to go out into hallways or anything. Um, they take care of those needs and, uh, we go throughout our day. However, if we go down to that next level, just if we're going in and out of our room, if we go down to, uh, student choice or the library, then we come back. Let's wash our hands when we get to student choice before we mess with any of those books. And then let's wash our hands again, uh, when we come back into the classroom to get out our pencil and do math. Um, and then going down to the lowest level, the teachers are just gonna do like we always have those best practices of before lunch. Making sure, um, as students come out of the restrooms, that we do as elementary teachers, we kind of look to see how long were they in there? And where are their hands wet? So we're, we're gonna, um, just constantly be watching that. Uh, we would appreciate all support by parents to kind of coach their kids and practice with their kids on best hand washing, um, strategies or whatnot. I'm sure Dr. Alvaro, Alvarado would help me say like 20 seconds, sing the ABC song or whatever it is. Um, but this is one area that I think, man, it should have been in place all this time, right? For flu season and all those other crazy things. I see Dr. Alvarado shaking her head. Um, so this one, I, I am super confident that the staff at all buildings would be 100% behind it and make it safe for your kids.
At the middle school level, the schedule will really work in our favor. We're also kind of chunked out. We've got about an hour between each, each one of our periods. So that's gonna work out well. And then as they're transitioning back and forth, but we'll also add an education piece. I know we talked about that and we were talking about cell phones earlier. I think one of our biggest responsibilities is to educate, not just enforce. So, uh, we'll be teaching them, reminding the kids how to use a hand sanitizer well, how to wash their hands. We can't just assume that they know how. We're gonna teach because that's what we do best. So we're gonna teach them those things and then we'll put in procedures like I spoke about earlier as the kids leave the classroom. We'll, we'll use that to help enforce social distancing and make sure. So, um, uh, this, this one will be easy just because of our built in structure.
All right. At the high school, um, lots of classrooms, configuration differs greatly throughout the building. So I'm going to encourage your app demand, there you go, that all teachers develop a procedure that works for their room. What I don't understand is, okay, we're gonna make kids wash their hands, but yet we're gonna send all these kids traffic congestion around a, a hand sanitizer bottle. So I'm gonna leave that to the t- individual teacher's discretion. And I also think there's absolutely nothing wrong with just encouraging families to, in each child's backpack, ha- have your own hand sanitizer. And, um, at the building, um, in our building, we'll ask that take place on the quarter hour. Uh, because we have 84 minutes, so it's not gonna always fall at a perfect time. But at the high school, again, I think these are young adults and with a little initial training upfront, we're gonna be okay. Mr. Joyce's hand is turning blue.
So just all three of you mentioned hand sanitizer and I'm sure, um, staff and administration are paying attention. But there was a recall today from a couple retailers on hand sanitizer. I don't know what brand we have or whatever. Just keep yourselves informed, more of a comment than a question on, uh, make sure our supply is, uh, not gonna hurt anybody. Thank you.
We will definitely do that. And I think it's also important, I think Ms. Rusher alluded to that too. But several of our classrooms, um, yes, will have hand sanitizer in it, but we have sinks in several. Not, I'm not saying everywhere, but there are sinks. Yes, will have hand sanitizer in it, but we have sinks in several. Not I'm not saying everywhere, but there are sinks throughout. The district that kid or, you know, staff or students could could also use. So we are fortunate. In some of the some of the areas and rooms.
Okay, were there any questions or comments on hand sanitizer and hand washing? Andy?
And I think Mrs. Rusher talked about this, so I appreciate her feedback on it. I guess just. Is it realistic to to wash hands every hour? I mean, if you if you if I did my math right, twenty kids at twenty seconds apiece. That's six, almost seven minutes of hand washing every hour. And so it sounded like she thought it was doable, but that that's one. I know we we had a few comments on that, you know, is it? Is it realistic to expect them to wash their hands every hour? So that's a comment that I have. I I don't know if anybody has specific answer to that other than what Mrs. Rusher said.
Okay, I do have one question. It's mostly for Dr. Alvarado. Can you? I mean, I've read things and I'm who knows the accuracy of them, but. There's there's been articles and stuff about overuse of hand sanitizer and causing, you know, adverse reactions. Is is there any any validity behind concern you could have in a small case? Small percentage that but we could have some issues with 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 hand sanitizing, you know, seven or eight times a day, one student doing that.
I do it about thirty times a day, in addition to washing my hands about thirty times a day. So I've I don't know unless you're ingesting it. How it would be harmful, toxic to put on your hands. I agree with Mr. Hamblin that the older children should take responsibility for themselves. Again, this would come from their parents who who would be able to relay the risk that exists at home for them to get COVID. So that they have it in them to do the right thing because it helps their family. Like I'm going to school, but I'm also going to use my hand sanitizer. I'm going to wash my hands as as indicated because it protects my family. And so some of that on the older children is on them. And with little kids, you know, teaching them to wash their hands well, well, to me, that's. Part of what school does is teach you how to be a good citizen. And right now in the middle of a pandemic, it's learning how to wash your hands. So if it takes five, six extra minutes an hour, it's time well spent.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other questions on this one, so we can move on to temperature checking.
Okay. With temperature checking, where we would be at right now, we're looking at the high level on the particular temperature checking. So all individuals entering our attendance centers shall have their temperatures checked before. Entering the building for the first time. So as we talked about on the bus, if they the first time is the bus, then their temperature check is done. If it's other individuals coming in, then they would have that done the first time. And I know there's lots of questions. How would this look? But before we get into that from the elementary, middle school and high school. I'd like to talk a little bit about the type of temperature checks that we would have at the different sites. And the, if you want to say, equipment that we have secured and ordered. That will be coming into the district at this point. And Nikki Seeley has been overseeing that piece of it. So I'll have Nikki, if you don't mind sharing a little bit about what we have on order and it is in stock and it is coming here.
Yeah, correct. What we have on order for most of our students to be able to use is that contactless. Thermometer that would be done on the forehead. And then for staff members, we also have thermometers that are wall mounted. That would be right inside the door that they would be able to take their temperature as they walk into the building. And both of those have already been ordered. And I mean, should be on their way very shortly.
From there then about what that would look like for our elementary, middle school and high school. We'll start with, we have not started with middle school, so let's start with middle school today.
So we mentioned our entry procedures before. So what we would do is designate several entrances. I think we've designated four total entrances, which would be our front entrance, the bus entrance, and then one for each or five, one for each grade level. And then so we would have lines up there. We've talked about some signage that would help us with distancing. And then some supervision needs that we would have with trying to help make sure kids are orderly and lined up. And then as they enter the building, then we would start those temperature checks at seven fifty. And then process them into the building, allowing them to go pick up a break sack lunch if they or breakfast if they want to do that and then head to class. So that's what it would look like from our end.
And Derby North would look very, very similar to that. The work, our our doors are so close to our grade level hallways. I could even break my mind up by team. And I worked with with Mr. Liston today to have him check all the traffic flow back and forth. And and he liked our plan and said it would meet traffic needs and and we're very confident in our plan. We've got a couple of ways to do it. Just to make sure we're very efficient. And like it just depends on how we how we work the staffing.
Elementary, Ms. Rusher.
Basically, at the elementary, when I worked with my colleagues, it kind of varied by building on some. Maybe if they had five entrances, they were going down to maybe three. Or if they only had one, such as Park Hill, they might open it up to two so that you didn't have people gathering in big groups there. Again, all students, all staff, everyone that would be required to be in the building would have that temperature check. When you go down to that next level, it's really relying on the district to kind of notify us where we're at. And if it's kind of recommend recommended by everyone that comes into the building. And then at that low level, we're asking families to take their child's temperature at home. Just to make sure that they're under and before sending them to school. But again, it's like the other buildings, it would be an everyday thing and it would, I think, just become part of our routine. And and again, another one of those things that it's pretty easy for us to implement and become habit. And like Mr. Smith said earlier, it would just be something that we do all the time or all year long. Just so that we don't Monday, but not Tuesday, Wednesday, but not Thursday.
Okay, and at the high school.
Okay, speaking in a definitive way, at the high school, we will. Limit entry in three different areas. By having the temperature taken as a student gets on the bus, served as the one time a day, that helps us immensely. I hate to do this, but we would flip where the buses drop to the north side of the building. We just feel that we are able to pull buses one at a time. They're only allowed to unload one time. At the K Hall entrance. So there's, I think there's close to twenty seven buses that drop at Derby High School. So there's a whole lot of students that we will not be taking the time to do. One thing I'm not sure of is the reset time on these devices. That at the other three entrances, keep in mind the banks to doors of Derby High School, again, like the hallways are extremely wide. Each bank is four, in some cases, five doors wide. We will have two of those doors at each where students would enter. And again, that the reset, how quickly they reset, I assume it's instantaneously. But that could be the limiting factor that would would cause that process to take a little bit of time. But again, not anything that I do not see we are able to 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 do. If that is what is the decision is.
You ready for questions? Sorry. Okay, Robin, go ahead.
So I just had a couple of questions. One of them is more of a comment and that is on the visitor piece. I do think it would be good to go ahead and check the visitor's temperature as well. And so it's not listed there, but just kind of if all the staff and students are having their temperatures checked. It seems like if we're having it other adults in our building, they should have theirs checked as well. So that's just a suggestion that I have. That's just more of a comment. But the other question that I have would be, so on transportation, if you're taking their temperature on the bus. What do you do if they are if they test positive or if their temperature is too high? Then is there a procedure in place on how to contact their parent if their parent just dropped them at the bus stop or something like that? Have you thought that through yet?
But Burke or Randy, I think if you guys are on there, I know you had worked extensively on the plan. And regarding temperature checks on a bus, if somebody has a temperature.
Yeah, we have. I don't think that Randy's on here tonight. This is Burke Jones. I'm the director of operations. We have had multiple discussions about what that would look like. And I think it would vary depending upon the age of the student as far as what they were allowed to do if they were not able to get on the bus. I think clearly some type of parent contact would need to happen. We have not worked out the details on exactly what that would look like yet. But it is on is on the forefront of our discussions at this point.
Okay, Tina.
Also, Burke, to piggyback on what Robin was saying on that, is is what happens if someone shows up without a mask? If we're ma- if if that's going to be our mandate, if they show up without a mask for the bus, what we do and how we handle. Parent contact and making sure that that child's not left at the bus stop for the bus to move on.
Right, we have masks available that will be on buses so that if a student does forget theirs. They will have one available for them to use disposable, like surgical type mask.
Okay, very good. And then I do have another question. So Heather, I'm assuming. Staff is going to be responsible for doing these temperature tech checks on the students, correct?
We will have to have our staff of some sort with individuals that have been designated to help out. Yes, we have to have somebody to do that.
So is that going to be something that we'll also have to work out as well on an MOU? Because it could be occurring before their actual contract time?
And we would need to identify, you're right, if we are using particular staff. If that's outside of their duties of who that would be. We would also need to look at whether that's with with nursing or was that with classified staff? And identify those individuals that would be doing that. Yes, that is true. And if it is certified staff, that's right, we would have that outlined in an MOU.
Okay, and then the last question I have is. What happens if we have a parent who sends their kid to school? They pass a temperature check. For, I'm just going to throw this out there. Someone gave him some Motrin, someone gave him some Tylenol before they got there. Because they were maybe a little questionable before they left for the school. And halfway through the day, they just they spike a temperature. I mean, you may not know by looking at that child that that child has a temperature. And if we're not checking them again. Are we just being reliant on them to self diagnose?
Well, I see a couple of things here with this one. One, I think this is where and for all the families that are out there. We need your help too. If a kid is not feeling good for a day. It is a matter of they need to stay home. This is not knowing with COVID a time to give them. Tylenol or something else. If they're not feeling good. And not giving it to them and then sending kids to school. That one should never happen. But if that is happening, this is one to not mess with to do that. So we're asking families to make sure that that's not happening with it. So that's the first piece of it. The second one is is if they come to school and they're sitting there. And I'd equate this much like, I'll use lice, for example. If you're sitting in class and you're itching and itching and the kids itching and you send them down. To the health room and there's you may suspect there could be other kids in the room that have lice. Much like this, if they a kid that's sick and has a temperature that goes down very much, then the kids could be. Suspect susceptible again to have their temperature checked again during the day. To make sure that we have not spread that, you know, and there's fever with other children. So I think at any time that would be a nurse's call to deem if that's it. Our piece is we want kids to be safe and that is important and any measures that we have that. We need to look into, we would do so. Nikki, do you have anything else on that that you would say from a nursing standpoint?
No, just that it would kind of every like the anything in the past would kind of be into effect where if a teacher thought a student didn't feel very well. Or a lot of times teachers know the looks of their kids and they can kind of start to tell and they can send them to the nurse to be checked for any number of things. It might not be a COVID related fever. It might be a strep throat or it might be an ear infection. But the nurse can kind of do an assessment of the student based on that. So that isn't possible tilting them to do the to do a temperature check throughout the day. Just wouldn't necessarily be schoolwide.
Okay, Andy, your question?
Yeah, so. One of the the references that was included in the navigating change plan. Was act actually the the group that Dr. I believe Coolman was a part of. And I think she's on, so I'd be interested to get her feedback. But I'd like to read a piece of that. It was in appendix C of the state's document they provided us. And it's talking about screening prior to school entry. It says, according to CDC guidance dated June third. For K two through twelve schools and childcare, schools and childcare programs are not expected to screen children. Students or staff to identify cases of COVID. Talks about temperature screening. Upon arrival to school is not recommended would cause potential crowding in lines and delayed entry and start times. In addition, temperature screening in young children is not a reliable screen as fever is present in. Approximately fifty percent of infected children. Some of the additional CDC guidance talks about how. I guess it's it's not out of the ordinary for children to have up to eight respiratory illnesses or colds every year. And there's not a symptom or set of symptoms that only occur in children diagnosed with COVID. It just varies across the board. It goes on to talk about how students with chronic conditions like asthma allergies may have symptoms like cough or nasal congestion. Without having any infection at all, symptoms screen screenings have the potential to exclude some students from school. Repeatedly, even though they do not have COVID or any contagious illness. This may worsen disparities in students who already miss due to chronic conditions. So to me, that's that's a concern. I is and and I'm specifically talking about students. I don't know from from the evidence that has been provided to us, especially with this committee's work. And also the CDC that it's even worth our our time and effort to do it. And the effectiveness doesn't seem to to be there. So. If if Dr. Coolman is on, I would be interested to hear her feedback as to what her committee recommended and. What her thoughts might be, if that's okay, Heather, if she is in fact on.
Sure.
Sure, can you hear me? Yes, thank you. You are correct with the the latest version of the CDC says that schools aren't expected to screen children or staff. And our group. Is pediatricians didn't recommend it just for the various reasons that you said. I think this falls under the the executive order of the governor. It falls under executive order twenty fifty nine that the governor put out. So I think it's. Would be up to the school system on whether they're going to uphold the the governor's order, executive order.
Yeah, and I guess I'm more interested to know if in fact your group's opinion is still the same as it was. If that's still the case, or if that's changed at all on on this issue. And then I think we'll probably talk about the governor's order and how we how we handle the legal side. But I guess just from a medical perspective, appreciate your guidance. And and again, I found a lot of benefit to your committee's work and appreciate. Definitely that work. So would really like any feedback you have, maybe on behalf of the committee, if if you have that or if there's been any been any updates to what what was provided.
Sure, we have provided. Several changes to our document over the last week and we're in the process of getting another endorsed version out hopefully this week. As far as the screening, though, I think we didn't really make any other changes to that. And we again didn't recommend universal screening. We really encourage parents to take responsibility. And to screen their children before school, just because we recognize. The challenges I think that school districts are going to have to be able to implement screening on. several thousands or hundreds of kids coming into the district. So um, so yeah, for um, we just, I I think we just see it more of a challenge than um than being the be really being a benefit, but um, I I think it's possible. I mean, I get screened every day going into the hospital um prior to work, and I think many of you guys probably are getting screened um at your line of business too. So I think it just depends on the feasibility, I guess, at each district level. Um, but from a medical standpoint, um we didn't necessarily recommend it. Um, what we recommended were parents taking their responsibility. Um, and then um also um teachers having kind of a keen eye to pick up on maybe students that aren't feeling well in the classroom.
So, so picking back on that right now, um as she pointed out, and thank you again for joining us, but this is with temperature checks in that executive order um with twenty fifty nine, and I know Mr. Ryder, um whenever Mr. Kippenberger, you'd like to hear from him, is on regarding the items that fall under that, that will be with under some items with temperature check and also with mask when we get it um that fall under the executive order.
And I, I guess, just as a follow-up, if I may, um I I'm really just interested to know what makes the most sense based on the guidance from uh especially professionals like this group and also the CDC. And so, I mean, I know we talk a lot about data and science and and there's specific um percentages that are talked about about the effectiveness or lack thereof with students. And so to me, that is stuff that we need to take into consideration. And so to me, I I would like for us to talk about it and figure out what makes sense from a practicality standpoint and also the data that doesn't seem to be there, that it's effective for for students. And um and and I would be interested to hear Mr. Ryder's position, but I also think we should we should, you know, we can come out with uh where we think things should be, understanding that they may change over the next few weeks based on um how things settle out with the the governor, the attorney general, all those things. So that would be my recommendation is that we take the information we have from the health professionals and uh try to make a decision uh for the district tonight.
Okay. Were there any other questions or comments on the temp checks? Uh Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, um, we get this little yellow band here, get a new color every day, temp checks. Uh, we tried a few different ways to check temperature if we have not already used what we are buying. I would say to try to find a way, fast way to do that, if it's what I think it is where it's a skin kind of thing. We finally ended up with a camera that's probably it's very quick. It's you just basically almost pass by it. But uh the other ones that we had, there was lines and lines of people, lots of failures, lots of misreadings. But just uh something to think about. And I, Andy, everything you said there, I have been thinking about the same thing is how much is it worth it? And if, like, many people, not just children, are not gonna show the symptoms of a fever. And then the logistics of what we're trying to do with it. And also the uh the sensitivity of it. I just, it'd be something that I think we should reconsider. Not just a mandate that statewide.
Okay. I will just add in, um, not taking a stance or sharing an opinion on this at this point, but as you've mentioned, there are a lot of different um guidance to consider. So just to share, um, one of the pieces of guidance that we have been looking at all throughout creating this document, um specifically that order um was where we were coming with, coming at with the high level of the mandated requirement there. But also along with that, the um navigating change document from the Kansas State Department of Education has a paragraph on temperature checks and screening. And and like all of you are saying, I've thought a lot about this as well. I'm not in any way disagreeing, just sharing this information. Um, it does say that staff members should be screened daily by taking their temperature upon entry to a school facility. Um, if possible, staff members should make visual inspection of every student for signs of illness. Best practices support taking each student's temperature daily. Preferably, the district uses no-touch thermometers and conducts screening with a physical barrier between the staff member and the student. Alternatively, the staff member wears personal protective equipment. And then um another bullet there, work with the local health department to determine if it's appropriate to have families monitor students' temperatures at home. So again, just sharing, that's another piece of guidance that we have dove deeply into with that navigating change document from KSDE, so just wanted to share that information with um everyone here.
Okay, um, I got one quick comment. I think Dr. Coleman has a comment as well. But based upon kind of some of the other comments that were made um with feasibility, logistics and of screening, you know, the thousands of students that we have. You know, I just pulled up the CDC's new guidelines as of, I think, July twenty third and 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 they they do say is again, that they don't recommend universal screenings to be conducted by schools. So, I mean, just just solely based upon that and and as well as um the physicians group that I think we're gonna hear from here in a sec, as well as just the logistics. You know, I would like to probably look at this again as well. I I don't know um if it makes sense in our situation. I mean, if the if the highest disease, you know, the Center for Disease is um saying against it as well as our um physician group that were that was in the KSDE document is recommending against, I I think maybe we need to look at their medical um expertise as we decide. I know we had to go with the with the executive order mandate and building this table and understand, but I I do wanna have a conversation with Mr. Ryder as well on that. I'm hearing a little bit. So um, that's kind of my thoughts on that, but I I think Dr. Coleman had her hand up, I believe.
Yes, I I was just gonna say, we did modify to say that um screening staff and visitors and adults um would make sense. And even if you look at the KDHE data for the state of Kansas, the most common symptom that um adults have presented with has been fever, I think up to eighty-four percent. Um, so certainly um temp screening of adults makes more sense than temp screening of children.
Right, I agree. That that obviously would not pertain any, that that would not have any sort of logistical concern, or at least not anywhere near the amount of doing all the students, I wouldn't wouldn't think, and that is the more vulnerable of our population. Um, but with that said, I think uh Andy had a comment, go ahead.
Dr. Coleman, is there a, is there a cutoff for the effectiveness that you know of on temperature checks? I mean, I I I too would agree that um it it sounds like it is effective for adults and is an indicator of potential illness. Um, is there a cutoff that you know of where it becomes less effective? We know it sounds like with kids, it's it's not generally speaking, but do you know of an age cutoff on that?
Um, that's a great question. I'd have to go back and look. Um, I was trying to find the reference here that we cited. I would say definitely the younger population, um, so kids under ten probably had less fever. Um, and I would have to go back and see if I can find any up-to-date literature on that, on adolescents for you.
Okay, thank you.
Andy, if I could jump in and just make one comment really quickly. I know this isn't necessarily in regards to everybody getting temp checked in the building, but just as a clarification, a temperature and a student being sent home for the day has been in our handbooks for a very long time. So I know this has to do more with the logistics of getting kids into the building and temperature checking everybody. But sending a student home because they have a temperature has been in our elementary, middle and high school handbooks for quite a long time.
I I guess, yeah, I would totally agree. I think this is a really probably a lot different with screening everybody. Not just because they have symptoms. And so uh that's my concern. And and I also, I know Becky had mentioned the KDH or the the Department of Education's guidance. I I did listen to their presentation and they did mention that with bigger districts, it is difficult to do this and um they before the governor's mandate came out, I mean, they talked about how it wouldn't be expected that, you know, this would be done at bigger districts just begin just because of the logistical challenges. So um, I do remember um talking about that as well. So um, understand it's not an easy issue. It just again, I, it's one of those things where I don't see the effectiveness of it, especially younger ages. And so um would have some concern about us doing it for the kids.
Okay, um, any other questions or comments on the temperature checking or responses? Tina?
Heather, how has this been handled in our summer programming? If we have a child that comes to the, to um latch key and they maybe were running hot that morning and they tested with the temperature, it it hit on them. How how do we handle that now?
Sure. Um, with that, I don't know, is that Becky with latch key? Do you have some information on that?
Yep, sure, I can talk about that a little bit. So I'm I'm actually gonna reference prime time um because I know of a situation there. Many of the kids were walking um to prime time and some of them didn't have maybe AC in their home when they left for the morning, so they showed up for prime time very hot. And um another instance was they were taking temperatures out in the parking lot as the sun was coming up. It was very hot. So those kids were were sitting in the shade or or um coming in the best on um or or you know, appropriately spaced, given fifteen minutes to cool down before those temperatures were checked. To my knowledge, at this time, it's my understanding that we have not had any of our students show up for a summer program and have a temperature read read higher than one hundred point four, um, other than those who arrived hot and it was it was obvious that they had been walking or had been in a hot car or whatnot and after a period to cool down, their temperature is checked out okay.
So is there a fail-safe built in if they were to have a false positive on a temperature? That they are re- they are, they are rechecked? I mean, we're not gonna, if we're, if we have them come back with a with a false positive, we're not gonna just automatically turn them away at the door. They will be held and rechecked.
Yes, at prime time, that is true. I'm gonna let Nikki Seeley weigh in on on the plan because she's been working with the nurses as we move into the school year. But um as far as the summer programming, yes, if it was, if it was apparent that it was because of some other reason that maybe they were overheated or whatnot, they were they were allowed to to stay in an isolated area and rechecked before they entered the building.
Yeah, Tina, I'll touch on that just a little bit. I've worked with um all building admin of kind of creating that location for that exact reason. If we do have a student who walked, they came and they were very warm and they needed to cool down first, so they could have ten or fifteen minutes in a building in a secure location, more than six feet apart from another student to then get their temperature checked again. Um, and again, to make sure that it's not done out in the sun, um because we know that that can help with that um false positive as well.
Okay. I'm good for now. I may take another one, but I'm good for now.
Okay, um, were any other comments or questions on this? Okay, I'm sure we'll come back to this one a bit um while we're discussing masks, because we'll get into the executive order at that time, but let's go ahead and move on to the mask.
Okay, um, with that, um, before we start, um um, mask, um, I think it'd be important that um Calvin Ryder's on, and we also have, I believe, Donna Whitman was able to join us from Kansas Association of School Boards. But um, uh, Mr. Ryder, can you tell us exactly, because I know there's lots of questions regarding um mask and there's different orders that have been out there. Where are we at um guidance-wise for our district? And what do we at this time, knowing that things could change down the line? Um, but where are we at currently regarding mask?
This time, at this moment at eight twenty-nine, this is, this is where, this is where we are. Uh, I think everybody knows that House Bill uh twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen was uh passed uh and the governor signed it, and that's what giving the governor uh authorities and the executive orders. And these executive orders can then be uh and be uh made less stringent by the act of the Sedgwick County Commission, which which has done so in a, in a couple instances, or any county uh can make them less stringent. So what we have is, is that we, uh, currently we have governor's order, we have a uh Sedgwick County uh uh health officer, uh Dr. Menz order. We have a Sedgwick County, that's issued the order. And uh, and then we of course have Wichita City Council uh this had an order, that's issued an order, that's one of the uh attended centers. But I'm good to get to the bottom line, it is after looking that through this back and forth uh a good part of the day is that uh the governor's order is going to control uh, you know, whether it's based on uh, you know, current medical, current data, it controls. Uh, it's interesting that the county has has uh uh, or excuse me, the the county medical examiner uh pretty much adopted the governor's order. And then Sedgwick County uh issued, Sedgwick County issued their order, which was uh re- uh reducing or kind of pulling back from their health uh director, Dr. Menz's order. I've talked to the assistant count- uh county counselor today just to ask him, what is the county's position on this? Is, does the county have a legal position that their order has uh made the governor's orders less stringent? And he and the assistant county councilor said, no. They, and and, you know, o- obviously, obviously, that's, that's their legal opinion of the county, that the governor's order still stands. And and uh, and their order uh changing the mask requirement from, you know, six and above to twelve and above, uh, he says, is still effective in the county. But it doesn't reverse the governor. So we have these orders in place from from several different, several different uh entities, but the bottom line is, is the governor uh governor's order controls because the county did not say, they said they are reversing Dr. Menz order and not specifically the governor's order. When you look at the, you look at the state statute, it says they can, they can, they can change it and be less stringent, uh, and that's what they've done. They made Dr. Menz order less stringent, which Dr. Menz order was the same as the governor. There's the argument there that that they did, that doing that uh makes the governor's orders less stringent, but that's not the opinion of the attorney for the uh county. So uh with that, you know, there, we we really can't uh, it's pretty hard for anybody to argue uh against the county's own opinion when they say the governor's controls. The governor's order is, you know, is fifty-nine, uh twenty fifty-nine, so now we have uh you know, there, that doesn't mean there's gonna be, you know, most likely it'll be a sixty, sixty-one, and uh, we don't know when that's coming down. As new, as new, uh, you know, she receives more advice. I would imagine, you know, that we will uh get further guidance and the county can certainly act uh and act specifically uh on twenty fifty-nine. And then the, then the uh county councilors will have probably a different view. For for right now, the uh, the mandate, mandate, what we see in the uh, in the logistics plan, if you look at that under masks uh, you know, her order requires masks for a- a- anybody from six and above, the uh temperature checks are for individuals, and that's, that's all individuals entering the building. That that would be visitors, uh, that would include visitors. And sanitizing, I think, is, is where we have into the high level of uh the executive order twenty fifty-nine, I believe that's that's in line with the governor's order. So that, you know, that is, there's been talk with the attorney general. Uh, you know, this is a political matter where attorney general doesn't agree, the governor agrees and disagrees, and we have county commissioners. Uh, the attorney general hasn't issued a, an opinion. And and I don't know that, and maybe Donna, if she's on here, she, she may be more tuned in statewide what's going on and whether a district, school district, or anyone else is asked for an attorney general opinion. Uh, the only opinion I've seen from him is is a verbal opinion, which, you know, obviously even uh uh, he hasn't got some forms issued the formal, so uh, until that happens, you know, if we have a formal opinion, then we would, you know, we'd have to circle again and 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 reassess this, but for now, uh, for now, we're looking at what the, what the governor has.
Okay, all right, Calvin, uh, thanks for coming out to this on short notice. Um, I did have one quick follow-on, and I see a lot of hands up as well. Uh, okay, so understand that the attorney general has not given a um official opinion on this. Um, he's, he, his quote was basically the state constitution would give local districts the ability to opt out or modify this executive order. So with that being said, and not necessarily with on what he thinks about it, what is your opinion on the constitution granting the authority to districts to be able to do that? Do you, do you see that same opinion that he's polling or or that? Or, I don't know, or do you not see what he's seeing, I guess, in that, it's since? In that sense, for saying that we, the authority would reside in us from this constitution?
You know, I, I've got, I've got questions constitutionally on, on, on a lot of the actions that the government, governments have done in the, you know, in these past few months. The, you know, the, the bottom line for, for us is, is that we can't go against, go against the governor's opinion unless we challenge it legally. And if, you know, it's, it would be a, an expensive, expensive task, something that, you know, the, an association may want to do to, to test that. I have, I have recommended, you know, during the school shutdown, when the Supreme Court was gonna shut down, that the, that we, we talked to the school district and said, "We have a constitutional duty. We have a constitutional duty to continue to educate students." That was a little bit, you know, that was when they were, we were talking about completely shutting down schools. And that was an easier question for, at that point, because it's a matter of not having school or absolutely just, you know, defying the, defying the order of the Supreme Court and saying, "Well, we have a constitutional duty to maintain schools and educate children, then we're gonna go ahead and do that. And if the, you know, if the Supreme Court doesn't like it, then, you know, we'll see what happens." But in this case, you know, in, in this case, these are, you know, this is, you know, there is, there's a, there's a, the restrictions while they're, you know, while they, they, you know, seem great, they're not as, you know, it's not a shutdown order. So, so, you know, I can't ever advise any of my school districts to challenge, you know, challenge the government's, you know, governor's order duly, duly enacted and, you know, and validated. It'd be a, it'd be a difficult, you know, a, a, a difficult matter unless it's an association deal where we, you know, where we, we, we look at it and many school districts go together and say, "We need, you know, these are, you know, either the doctors aren't doctors and the medical devices, the governor's not following it." But other than that, I, I don't, I don't think the constitutional issue would be, be very good until, you know, like I said, if the Attorney General issues an opinion, then we, you know, we'd have to reassess it.
This is Donna Whitman. I agree with Calvin's opinion. I think the Attorney General's decision, and remember, the Attorney General is just one attorney's opinion until it's tested in court. Now, as a general rule, most people rely upon Attorney General's opinion. But I think in this case, House Bill twenty sixteen is a statute of specific application that allows the county commission to overturn the governor's executive order. But they are the only one listed in the statute to have that authority to do so. So based on that, I, my, our recommendation to our board members is that they do the best they can, knowing that this is going to change day by day and probably hour by hour. And if you have six thousand plus students, you're not going to be able to control, you don't have enough staff to control every child and every employee at every given moment. But our recommendation is you make a good faith effort. You have a good faith immunity defense in case of a lawsuit, and you make a good faith effort. Will it be perfect? No. But as attorneys, Calvin and I are used to defending good faith efforts all the time, and it's going to be based upon, on the facts of each case in the event that there is any litigation. The Attorney General, one of members of the legislature have requested a written Attorney General's opinion. So that, that should be, KSB has been asked to provide input. The Attorney General often asks the KSB legal staff, and Angie Stahlbumer will be writing that for KSB with the input of the other attorneys. So, but they, they will be issuing an opinion. But, and it may differ. You know, that, that's why district court judges exist, because not all attorneys agree on how a statute is to be interpreted. But the rules of construction, statutory construction basically state that if you have a statute of specific application, then that would apply in schools. It is the twenty sixteen basically says that under the powers of the governor in a state disaster emergency, that any order from the governor has the force and effect of law. So as your attorneys, Calvin and I have to advise you to make a good faith effort to follow the law. And the only group in the law currently that has the authority to modify or change the governor's executive order is the county commission.
Okay, thank you. So Matthew, go ahead.
So Calvin, the current plan that you have in front of you, administration staff have worked really hard to put together. We meet the spirit of the governor's order, correct?
Except, except under the masks, I believe.
Except under the masks? And what specifically? On the mask, do we not meet the plan?
Uh, I think all students, basically six and older are gonna be required to wear masks.
And our plan does not follow that?
Right now, I'll chime in that everything we have received, unless Calvin, you have something different from the last time we visited, our plan is written to the T of what the government, or the governor has. As you see on the left, it says is mandated require, as exceptions is outlined in EO twenty-five-nine regarding it. So it outlines and it covers exactly what the governor's plan is. So if there's something else, then we will need to know that.
Yeah, Matthew, I was, I was looking, I'm looking at a, a older plan, so I, it does.
So the current plan meets the governor's guidelines. The only other question I have then is, if we were not to follow that plan, would that put the school district in any kind of legal jeopardy at all?
Well, there's, what I can say is, is I don't know whether it'd be any legal jeopardy, but following the plan gives you coverage. You know, nobody, nobody can really, really say anything that you're following it. We're following what the governor mandated. That's an insurance policy.
Okay, thank you.
A couple other things, I think, that's important, that questions as parents are watching this and, and staff are watching it. Questions we get is, you know, could someone wear whatever on a mask? And that's a frequent question that we've got or one that's come up. Does it have to be school appropriate? The answer is yes. It would be like any other article clothing that would need to be appropriate coming in to school. And our handbooks outline what is appropriate on clothing regarding it. So that is a question that we have gotten and wanted to make sure that we point out. And another one, it was talked about is, and I'll let Becky touch upon that just legally. And I think this is important because as parents, and again, what's to expect in a school setting? Because there, the executive order outlines that there are individuals that may be due to health reasons. Are there things that are exempt from that? So again, it's pointing out, and again, following that governor's orders. And I'll have Becky touch upon what does that mean? Because I think that's very important, that parents realize that and they don't walk into a building and think, "Oh, my goodness, they're not enforcing because these people don't have masks on." So what does that look like, Becky, that you can share that we've received? And I know we have legal, legal here with KSB to chime in or with Calvin Ryder. But Becky, what do we have on that area that we understand?
Sure, and I hope Donna is still on here with KSB. I was, have been consulting with them. And when we spoke, it is my understanding at this time that if we do have a staff member who is unable to wear a mask due to medical reasons or something else that would fall under those exceptions outlined, we would request to have a doctor's note. But we could not require that at this point. So we would definitely inquire with them, talk with them, help them understand the expectation and the reason that we would be requesting and recommending that they wear a mask. We would also make sure that they were aware of their, their own risk that they would be taking on. If, if they didn't have a medical condition that could be documented, then they would just choose not to comply with that order. So they would be taking on some risk themselves if someone were to catch COVID or whatnot from, from, from the choice that they had made to not comply with that order. Of course, not if there is a documented medical reason. We would not be asking them to do that. But there, there have been a lot of questions about, what if they just don't feel comfortable wearing the mask or just choose not to wear the mask? So it would be difficult for us to always distinguish between those people who have the medical condition and those people who are making a choice, because we would not be able to require that a note be shared with us. Same would go for students. So we would be documenting everything. We would be working with staff members through the Human Resources Department. We'd be working with families. But there would not be discipline for that, per se. We would talk about reasonable social distancing and keeping everyone as safe as possible and working through those situations individually through human resources. So, and if Calvin or Donna have something to, to add to that, I would very much appreciate, I've appreciated their guidance all along through this. With things ever changing quickly, they have been right there, extremely responsive for us and giving us great guidance. So if either of them would want to speak about that as well, I would appreciate their input.
Okay. I think, Mark, did you have a question? No longer, okay, Andy?
So as far as the navigating change plan from the state that was provided, they talked about, again, pre-k through fifth, sixth grade, masks not recommended. During their presentation, actually, I think it was Craig Newans-Wanter talked about how, again, the physicians' group said it was more harm than good, was a distraction. And, you know, kids, especially younger ones, would be playing with the mask, touching their face, and it would be more of an issue with transmittal than if they hadn't worn one anyways. So again, and, and I know the, I think, I think you have Dr. Coolman on the phone still, would be interested in her take. The physicians' group did provide this guidance. And again, as a school board member, we're trying to understand, you know, what evidence we have to make a decision. And so in that plan, there is specifics about that, talking about, again, elementary school not wearing a mask, middle school, high school, wearing a mask and, and kind of how that would look. I guess would be interested to, to hear from her. And, you know, if their committee is still recommending that, what that might look like.
Sure, this is probably one of the biggest areas that we have changed and updated our recommendations on, just as we've had more information. When we completed this document, it was about six weeks ago. And we didn't have a lot of data, especially in the US, around mask-wearing. I think we still, when you look at the data, kids under ten years of age, who are kind of in that zero to nine age group, don't seem to be the super-spreaders as much as the kids over ten into the adolescence as they start to behave more like adults in their rates of transmission. So I, I still, our, our group is a little mixed on that. And I think certainly if, well, I was gonna say, if what we have kind of come to the consensus is that we've now had more experience and evidence in our communities with kids wearing masks. And certainly, we've been able to see, even with my own children, our own children in our group, that kids are pretty comfortable and seem to be wearing masks okay without a lot, you know, with instruction and, and education and kind of teaching them and letting them kind of be engaged with their own picking of their mask and, and things like that. So they seem to be more comfortable. So our group has kind of put out that we recommend that all students in K through twelve wear a mask, especially in areas, common areas like the bus and where they can't be physically distanced. We really recommend kids over ten be mandated or required to wear a mask just because of their increased risk of transmission rates among that age population. And then certainly, if you have the younger kids who maybe aren't able to wear the mask, they, you could probably realistically have a little bit more laxity in those kids just knowing that they don't transmit as much. And it's not, again, I think Dr. Alveretto talked earlier, it is about risk reduction and mitigation. Certainly, you're not gonna limit all spread in, even in those young kids. But the, the studies are pretty good to show that they just don't transmit to adults as much as adults transmit to adults or adolescents transmit to adults.
This is a quick follow-up, and I appreciate your feedback. What, has there been an updated document that we can reference for tonight's meeting that, that speak to that committee's recommendation as a whole? Or is this your opinion? Or I guess, how can we make a decision based, based on the information we have from the state's plan?
I can certainly email this draft. We are, our, our committee met on Friday to talk about this. We've made up, updates. We are hoping to get it reendorsed by the Kansas chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics tomorrow. There's a board meeting tomorrow. So we haven't officially released it yet with the updates until we have our endorsements. But certainly, I, I can certainly send you a draft statement of it tonight if you want.
And, and do you know, will there be specific references as you had in the other document? I think there were, gosh, I don't know how many related just to masks, but there were at least ten or so that, that had studies that you documented and provided in the, in the group's opinion. Will there be additional references that change your outlook? Or how will that look? Again, we're trying to make a decision tonight, so it's a little bit hard for us to, you know, understand what any changes you might have after tonight's meeting might look like. So again, just trying to understand the data studies coming out. Because before, there were studies that supported not requiring them.
Sure, I think we did add an additional study, I think the South Korea study that came out last week that looked at rates of transmission in household contacts. And again, it, it showed that the younger kids, less than ten, their transmission rates were much lower than those ten and above. But it did start to show that ages ten and above tend to have more transmission rates somewhere to, to the adults as far as spread among household contacts and non-household contacts.
Okay. Thank, thank you for your feedback again. Thanks for being on the call.
Matthew?
So, you know, we've heard a lot of different opinions tonight, everything else. But really, the only thing that seems to matter right now is the legal opinion that we have and backed up by Donna Whitman saying the governor's order has a rule of law. With that, I'm gonna move that we, we approve the security and the ready-to-learn plan and so we can move forward. Because with no changes, they're written to follow the governor's mandate, and we need to follow those to the T as of right now. I mean, that's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
I, I have some additional questions on the, some of the legal aspects.
One second, Pam, let Pam go real quick.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I have just a couple of quick questions about the overall plan. I just want to make sure I understand correctly. We have low, moderate, and high level. Whichever level we're at, that's consistent all through the column, correct? We're not gonna have a high-level mask and a moderate level hand washing. Do I understand that correctly?
No, it is by category that we're going through.
It could be all over the place.
So it could be all of, yes.
And what determines that? And who determines that?
That is working with the Sedgwick County, with a health department, pediatricians or mandates if we, per se, have a, a particular mandate.
So who, administration?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not the committee that came, it's the administration?
We would be working with that. The other, the other piece, I think, that would be important, I think, is just to keep people updated, you know, and, and having those discussions. We would be very much happy with, I think, as Mr. Ryder alluded, it's, at this time, this is what we're reporting, that we could do much like summer updates to give you update of the latest information at board meetings of where we're at and what guidance we have received, if that's of interest to you.
You, can you go back and tell us then? I think you, on those lower issues, you addressed it across the board. Can you tell us on the others where we would be at right now? I was going through this thinking we're at the highest level on all of these things, and you're saying that's not necessarily the case.
I think right now-
I think right now, when I look through each of those levels, we would be at the highest of the levels across the board today.
Okay, then my next would be from here, you know, this is all basically face to face classes that this would apply to. So then the next step would be hybrid. Is that correct? I mean, after you go through all of these, if it gets to a more. State of caution, we would be doing a hybrid with some of the face to face.
Yeah, and I think that's. Yes, important one. And I know Holly's on there about how we would transition because I know there's lots of questions about. And again, we're offering more than one model. So when you look at it, we're saying, hey, we have if people prefer and feel more comfortable, we understand with the online. Or two, we can have in person, but in between, if we needed to transition, Holly, do you want to talk a little bit about when we would transition and how that would look with hybrid?
Yes, so we would follow our local health guidelines as far as group size in order to transition to hybrid. So we would be looking at hybrid anytime that we would have group sizes that would be fifteen or smaller. In some instances, it could also be twenty or smaller if we have to. Maintain the six feet versus the three feet of distance. And we would prepare students and families. Excuse me, I know earlier in the patron statement, the mom was talking about needing to know so that the families could plan. And so as soon as the first week of school, we would be sending home a three part schedule that is part of that ready to learn plan. That would tell families what their in person schedule is, if we had to transition to remote. Or in or hybrid, what their hybrid days in person and remote would be. And then if we went full on remote. What times of the day their live lessons would occur at. So we would share that information with families and staff in advance so that everyone can plan. I'm an author to minimize our lost instructional time. If everyone remembers in March when we had our school closure. It took us at least a good week or so before we could get instruction back up and running. And we certainly do not want that to happen with each time that we may need to transition. So valuing instructional time with our students, we want to front load some of those pieces. And also do coherent trainings to explain and help them get comfortable with where to find their child. Information online so that they're able to do those pieces upfront. So we would have the goal of either starting remote or in person and then transitioning the hybrid based upon. Group sizes that have been provided to us by the health department.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's also important to note, sometimes we would get questions or there may be people out viewing to say. Why are we not starting just online? You know, that is a frequent question. Why are we not doing that? Because there are some districts that choose. So that is one of those, but we have families as one of those items. That's why those surveys were sent out earlier. To help provide some gauge of where are people at. It's very much like you receive the survey results of the calendar that we'll see later, but there are people that feel we could start school and want to start school. Earlier and some that want to wait in the majority want to wait till after Labor Day. So when you look at it, it's very much the same thing. There are families that want, and we want to be able to give those choices. To where families are on a nine week basis of what they feel most comfortable with. So the other one is when you do, I think it's important to note, any time with online learning to get counted for that. There are, and we talked about that just last time was about those learning logs. So that would require staff that are overseeing that to work with families and make sure that those learning logs are submitted. So we get to count the seat time of the students that are doing online learning.
Okay, Robin, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say that with these masks and the mandate that we have. It could easily expire too by the time we start school. So I think with those updates, you know, with every board meeting, I mean, if we're updated on. On that, that would be really helpful. And I think Matthew had a, he had a motion and I just want to second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Were there any more questions? I know I want to think Tina and Andy both do. Go ahead, Tina.
So I'm just going to say, you know, we have to make a decision based on the information we have at this very moment in time. I realize that we want more information. But we don't. For lack of a better word, and I know people are going to say, oh, Lord, there goes, but we don't have a crystal ball to know what's going to happen in another month. Okay, so we have to make a decision based on what we have at this very moment. At this very moment, we have the governor who's putting a man who's put a mandate in place. We have legal opinion that has stated that. We pretty much have to follow that mandate. We have a motion and a second on the floor. So I guess for me, I mean. Robin beat me to the second because I was going to second that we go ahead and accept this. We have to go ahead and accept something and move forward to give people. An opportunity to start planning. I mean, I realize the district has come out, we've planned, we've got all this stuff in place, but parents and. And other people deserve an opportunity as well. And by going back and forth and asking for more information further on down the line and further on down the line, we're not giving them that opportunity.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Yep, I'll second what Tina says to the degree that there's a mandate and there's some legal advice. I disagree with the governor's decision. I think that we are ignoring medical facts and statistics, but I also think that the school district ought to stay in a. Place that's following what we need to do for the state until the county. Makes a decision otherwise, and I hope they do, but I will follow what we have tonight.
Okay. So I guess my comment on this is that. I feel like the safety logistics plan should be what our district policy. Is or what we what we envision it to be and the mandates, I look at as a separate item because. At any time throughout a year, we may have policies in place and then get hit with a mandate from the county or the state. It didn't, it didn't, we didn't rewrite our policy. We implement a mandate that over that supersedes our policy. And so we live by that until it goes away. And then when it goes away, we have a policy already to fall back into. So with this plan, what I was hoping and what I would like is that we would have put. What we see, what our district policy is going to be for these items. Without event, without any mandates or restrictions from a higher level than our own board. So let's. This is what we will do with mask and temperature checking and hand washing and whatever the rest of them are. This is how we feel is the best thing for our district. With no one else coming down on us. And now if something does hit like we have now. Well, we'll abide by that because that's a mandate that we can't, we can't get around. But I still. Would would prefer that what we are voting on is is our our district policy. Not just saying, well, it's the governor's mandate, we have to do that. But well, of course, but we would do that for any other mandate she might bring down on us. For any other policy that we already have in place. We don't, we're not going to rewrite our policy. We're going to just do her mandate. So that that's kind of where I'm seeing for any of these topics and not even just masks, but any of them. I just think that that's the. Way I would have liked to gone with this, but we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Oh, Andy, go ahead.
So just a couple of comments. The first is in understanding there's motion and second. So if I can get. Further guidance from Calvin to in order to make this decision on my vote. What do we normally do if the attorney general provides some guidance as to how something may be handled? What, how are those normally looked at in a, in a, any other matter?
General opinions are they're non binding, but they are, I mean, they're not, it's not a, it's not the law. It is like Donna said, it's an opinion. But it's a pretty strong opinion. It's the attorney general. He's the one that interprets, interprets things. So many times people use that as a launching pad and say, I have an attorney general opinion that says. May I hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
Gosh, it was really good. I know what I said. I don't know. I've got to repeat this, but.
We could hear you until you push the button. So we heard the first part.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Did you hear the part about the attorney, the attorney generals?
Yes, sir.
Just, just, just that's a, that's a launching pad. If people can use that. You know, use that to go forward and it's, you know, it provides, it provides very good guidance and it provides. Provides a, you know, usually a constitutional basis. And many times the attorney general may, may bring it, bring something and challenge this, but. The, I think, I think what's going to happen. Honestly, is this, it's going to be more of a, more of a political move. This is moving so quickly. Like I said, this is governor's number fifty nine. And things are moving so quickly that, you know, I'm telling people that, you know, if you, if you like the way things are right now with the governor. Then then tell the governor and tell the commission. It's kind of commission. If you don't like it, let them hear from you. Because they are, they are, they are listening to people and they're listening to the medical advices as medical advice. You know, changes and that's primarily what they're doing. It's not, it's they're basing their decisions, you know, whether you agree, agree to agree with them or not. Each side is is basing their decisions on the medical opinions that they get.
So, so. If the attorney general actually came out with the opinion, would that be significantly different than what he has right now? That's one question. And then I guess the other question is how do we as a school district, if we thought we wanted to follow. Make some changes and follow the attorney general's guidance, how would we do that unless we put together our own plan that might be different than the governor? I mean, how would we as one body make that recommendation to the county commission if we don't take action tonight and try to. Make some changes to it? What would, what would be the alternative?
Well, if I understand, I mean, one alternative is, is it, is it, you know, the county commission. You know, here, here's which, what doesn't work. They, they, they need to hear, you know, they, they. They've met several times and, you know, they tweak these orders. One, one sentence at a time, and they need to hear what works or what isn't working. And it would be, you know, it's specifics. I don't know if you would need to have a, you know, have a, you know, a backup plan or not. I mean, the only I can really tell you is you've got to have a plan that follows the. The law as, you know, as even the, even the Sedgwick County county councilor says, you know, says it, says it is. So, so the, you know, the, I don't know what, you know, the backup plan would be. I mean, the district could say we would, you know, we were passing this. This is what our, this is what our logistic plan goes forward, but this is, you know, what we really want. I don't, you know, I don't know that the county would do with that.
Okay. I mean, I guess general comments. Based on the information we've gathered, I mean, to me, we've got to make the decision that's in the best interest for the kids and the data we have, guys. And the groups that have provided information has different expectation than what we're trying to pass tonight. And so. To me, with the attorney general's opinion, we've got some leeway, again, like, like Justin pointed out. If that changes, if, if it goes, I don't know what the next step is, but if it goes to higher authority that changes that, obviously, we have to make changes and follow it. But we do have some time. We've got a, at least a few weeks to go until that happens. And so I would. Vote no on this. The other comment I would have, I've got quite a few questions. Again, just operational kind of stuff that didn't fit these areas. So it would be nice if we could ask those tonight. So that's my other question for the board. If you guys have other questions that you've received that people are wanting to get answers tonight. To make a decision in the next couple of days, if we could have still some time to answer some of those questions.
Then I do.
I think we can. I, go ahead, Mark, sorry.
Oh, I just, just let you know, I do have some more questions.
Right, so I, I, I think probably everybody does. But I don't know, I guess Heather, I'm looking to you now. So we have a motion and a second. Do we need to go ahead and do we need to take the vote now and then we continue to ask questions? Or do we, do we? I don't know.
When you have a motion or a second, you would vote and then. On that, but. And then you can continue and ask questions, but if they're clarifying things you need to be able to vote. Then we would be able to answer those if that's the case. But usually we have a motion in a second to see if there's a vote. You have normal, if you hadn't got the second, but you have a second at this point.
No, for sure. Okay.
I guess I would, I guess in that line of thinking, I mean, I think we all have clarifying questions. I guess. If everybody's of the opinion that they can vote without getting all these questions answered, that would be one thing. So. Anyways, so quite a few questions on how things will look.
Okay.
I'll defer if Calvin, if you have anything else on procedures that we need to follow when you have a motion and a second, what guidance do you have on that?
Motion a second and what, whatever discussion you have and then, and then you vote. If someone wanted to pose another motion to. That we have adopted the governor's mandates in our logistic plan, and we would like to send a letter to the governor or send a letter to the. County commission to say this is our, you know, this is, this is the way we like to operate our schools. You can certainly do that.
So right now, what I understand the motion is for the ready to learn, just to clarify, for all those people that are watching, there's been so much discussion, right? Ready to learn and the safety security logistics plan. Is that correct?
Approve, to approve them as written right now. Yes.
And who, someone second to that, Tina, was that you or Robin? Sorry. Okay, so Calvin, one, one back to you, I guess. Ken, how does this work? Can we continue to ask questions or do we need to take this vote before on for this topic?
Night, you can continue to discuss this.
Before we take the vote, even though we have a second.
And we could even entertain a suggested motion, although we still need to vote on it first, correct?
For, we got to vote on the first one, yes.
But if there's recommendations before we vote on the first one, we can. I could maybe suggest another direction, even though we still need to vote on that first.
Right.
So we've all spent a lot of time thinking about these things. We've all been doing our research. I know this board takes all of this very seriously. For me, I, I tried to by myself with, with all the things I've read, all the letters from folks that have emailed us and. Medical staff, everybody's concerns, a lot of experience I have in the last few months at my own work. And I was prepared to everything I thought on this, our safety and logistics plan was good. My only. Place that I stopped was mandatory masks. And it's because I feel that, one, it's not enforceable at any level. Even with adults, it's not. We try. Knowing that it's not enforceable, I wonder how we will enforce it, but if we can't, then let's encourage it certainly. But parents can make choices. If, if I'm a parent and I understand that it's not enforceable or, or, you know. Being enforced, then. I have a choice to make. Do I want to? Stay at home and have online learning or take that risk? And that's a choice that families make. And so I don't think we can enforce this. And so I was prepared to stop there and say, we certainly encourage it. If we can provide masks as a, as a school district, we would, but to make it mandatory is, my opinion. Especially at the younger levels, I even know that are have read studies that that's actually has its own unhealthy side effects. With learning and health. So I wasn't prepared to make that mandatory at any level. I like the social distancing. I think that's can be as much as possible, but I, again. Our school is not large enough. It's like trying to take the, you know, the hundred pound or the ten pounds of flour, put it in a five ounce sack kind of thing. We're trying to do everything like a normal school year and then add all these logistics on top of it. Temperature checks. Try to have everybody have lunch in a, in a lunch area. And still do it with the same amount of teachers. I think it's impossible to what we're trying to do. And so we haven't really gotten away from the traditional plan, but we added a whole lot to it. And I think that's, it's, it's actually very short sighted on our own part. We should have taken some more radical directions. Maybe eliminated, eliminated some of the, the things that we don't need to have to educate children this year or even just the first semester. But. Anyway, that's a, my recommendation is to move away from this and do as. We were just hearing about that maybe we just decide. we were just hearing about that maybe we just, uh, decide as a school district, what makes sense for us and forward that to the governor or, uh, the, uh, the, the legal counselor. That's all I got.
I, I, I believe, I believe masks will be, uh, a necessary evil until there's a vaccine. Um, we certainly don't let people enter our office without wearing a mask. And I've seen pediatric, plenty of pediatric kids, four years old, coming in and wearing masks. Um, you, you don't, you really can't go to the store anymore without the person helping you, wearing a mask. And modeling this behavior is what, what creates, uh, compliance. Um, I think it's, you know, I think we're all going to be doing it for the foreseeable future and while there is a vaccine. So to, um, you know, make it not mandatory to wear masks or just, just recommend it, but not have everybody do it, especially at the middle school and high school level would be egregious.
Dr. Alvarado, um, so, so would you agree with the pediatric group that recommended not requiring masks for K through five then?
Yeah, the, I'd say nine and under. And so what we know about the nasal passages and, um, the other doctor, uh, Coolman, um, has all of these studies probably outlined, uh, because she's creating guidelines. But everything that I've read is that the, uh, SARS-CoV-2 virus requires a receptor called the ACE2 receptor, which is in the nasal passages. And you, you, you acquire more of these the older that you get, which probably is why this pandemic has, you know, pediatric, you know, the smaller kids have been largely spared. Uh, with the Spanish flu in nineteen eighteen, you know, children died. You know, you'd lose kids to the, to the flu, four, five, six, you, you know, you would have families of twelve and three would survive because of the Spanish flu that came through. But in this pandemic and what we've seen in other countries is that, um, kids might get sick. They might get, um, you know, that they don't, they don't spike fevers, uh, they don't get as much into their systems as possible. We, you know, and there always are some exceptions. This is not, not a hundred percent. We're learning as we go, uh, with this pandemic. Um, and certainly a mask does a few things. First of all, you know, it doesn't protect you a hundred percent, but it de- does decrease, uh, the load you're getting from someone, uh, who's not wearing a mask. And if they're wearing a mask, it decreases that load even further. And what we know about the disease is that sometimes the severity of the disease you get is proportionate to how much virus you're exposed to. A mask decreases your virus exposure. Maybe you do get exposed to someone who has it, but they were wearing a mask. You are wearing a mask and now you get mild disease versus severe disease. This is something that is a teachable point. It's, it's, uh, math, it's statistics, it's science. And it's something that we can, we can use this pandemic to educate kids and help them learn about social responsibility. And, uh, you know, for me, I think hand washing should have always been, um, a, a practice that we engaged in. Masks are a little bit of a, of a stretch. It's, it, you know, I wear one all day long, as I have since March, the middle of March, um, regardless of a mandate or not, because, uh, you know, I've seen, I've got patients that have been in and out and call me back and say they get tested positive. We, we don't know, right? So I wear a mask, whether somebody walks in and wants to wear a mask in a room with me, I wear a mask to protect them. I've, like I said, I've seen four-year-olds, five-year-olds come in with small pediatric masks. They're very proud of them. They see you're wearing one, they want to wear one too. I mean, I, I think it's what we model and, um, you know, will we be a hundred percent? No. Will there be time when we spread the kids out, let them take a break from their masks? Well, probably so. But to decrease the virility of your exposure, you know, wearing a mask is, is what we're going to do. And, and I see, I say for the foreseeable future until there's an effective vaccine and the studies are just now starting. So that may be in the spring at the earliest.
How often do you change your mask, Alvarado, a day?
Um, I, I wear a cloth mask with a filter and I, I wear it all day and I take it home and I wash and bring another one, wear a different one. Uh, initially, when I started, started working, I, I wore like the big N ninety-five and it was very uncomfortable. But we screen people at the door and we have them wear masks too. So since we're both wearing masks, um, I feel more comfortable with a cloth mask with a, with a filter inside of it. It's more comfortable. But yeah, I wear it all day. I wash my hands a hundred times a day. I use hand sanitizer, sanitizer and wash my hands and I wear a mask and I ask my patients to wear a mask. Um, so, you know, I think the only thing that would really help us like say, okay, you don't have to wear a mask is you could test everyone. If you had a rapid test and as you enter the building, you know, you're COVID negative and we knew that. Now, that would be revolutionary. That would be back to business as usual, but we don't have that. So until we have that or a vaccine or herd immunity, which, you know, um, it could be as low as fifteen percent of the population. But like I said, if you, if you want to get the virus to get herd immunity and get over with it, you, trust me, you want less viral load. That's where the mask helps us. So I, I don't think there's any way around eliminating a mask mandate, not now. I wouldn't say this is going to lighten up in, in November, December. So you wear that mask. You model it, you teach it.
Just, just for clarification, for younger kids, you would not recommend that they wear it?
I, I would, I would lessen the, um, rigidity of that recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
There's certainly, certainly, I want to wear one.
Okay.
Pam, go ahead.
Yeah, I could, I'd just like to suggest before we spend a lot of time crafting a different policy that we've, um, vote on the current motion to see if that's even necessary or not.
Okay. Looking around for any other quick comments. Okay. I mean, I, I know there's lots of questions, but we can, we have quite a few that want to take this. Go ahead and get the vote in, in order. So, um, we're going to go ahead and, and with Matthew with the motion on the floor to adopt as is with no modifications or amendments. And we have a second by, man, I'm going to forget now. Was it Robin? Okay. All right. So motion a second. All those in favor? So I got one, two, three, four. Okay, that motion passes four to three to adopt the logistics plan as, as written. Um, okay. So with that being said, I know there's still questions that weren't, had not been answered. Um, I'm sure that the no votes may want to specify. I think most of us already have, but, um, really, I mean, I'm not voting against the logistics plan as, as, as is. I'm voting against how we're not putting a, a, a district policy out in place. We're just going to say, we're just going to put the mandates as our policy. And I, I think we need to have our own policy and, and adapt to those as we would any other mandate throughout the year. Um, so that's kind of where I'm at with that. And that was, that represents my no vote. Um, but before you can tell the questions, I'll open up to Andy and Mark. They want to go ahead. Go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I would just say, like I said, we're supposed to make the, a decision that's in the best interest of, uh, you know, students, staff. And I think we're doing that. And I think we're probably eighty, ninety percent there, but on these, these few issues where, um, I mean, we've heard from Dr. Alvarado. Um, we've seen the, the committee's recommendation to the state, um, as far as masks for K through fifth graders. I don't think it makes sense. And if anything, I think it, uh, you know, they, from what, from the feedback we got, they could actually touch the mask and, and, uh, get sick even more. And so I, I think with me, I, I can't, I can't do it in good faith, especially knowing that, uh, attorney general has said that, uh, we could potentially do this on our own. And so I think at some point we have to, um, step out and say, hey, we'd like this to be changed. Um, and so I, I'd like to have the discussion and, and maybe the votes won't be there, but maybe we do, um, as Calvin, uh, talked about, maybe we at least pass some type of a recommendation or resolution or something of a letter that we could send to the county. Uh, because until we, until we, uh, do anything different and just go along with, um, you know, the, the, the mandates, obviously we have to follow them, follow them, but we have time, but until we step out and, and say anything, nobody's going to know that, uh, we disagree um, with, uh, with all the evidence that we've collected so far.
Mark?
And I'm, I'm like ninety-nine percent there with what we voted on. It's really not huge for me. I, I, I thank Alvarado for her input. Um, certainly I had misspoke up. The high school level, I would have thought that that would be the one place to be mandatory, if there was one, because they are approaching, uh, that age group where they're a lot more susceptible. But, um, I think I was more concerned about elementary age kids and, and that type of thing. But it's still, you know, I'm, I, I, I don't want it to be that I wasn't very, uh, far away from, from all this and I do support it. So that's all I got.
Okay. Any other comments from the rest of the board? Okay. C and nine. Based upon what Calvin had mentioned, um, with the opportunity to possibly add on another action that, that would, that would recommend, you know, to the county, what we would want to do locally or, or maybe even to, to take up some of these orders, um, with temperature checking, um, for logistical reasons and, and whatever else we, we mask at elementary level. Um, since, you know, if we look, uh, the county, I, we have to understand is probably doing their research as well. And, and they're getting informed by the health department and Dr. Menz and all those. And, and yet they, they just amended their own policy to, to not require a mask. And I, I know there's differences of opinions on, on, on multiple levels, but they don't require them at, at under age twelve. So, uh, and in talking to some of the commissioners, I, I've, I have a feeling that they, they intended that that would apply to schools as well. It doesn't, obviously it didn't happen that way, but, but I wouldn't mind that maybe we reach out to the county and, and ask them not to change their policy, but maybe relook at it and see if it, if that can be something that we can look at locally and have local control over and not necessarily, um, have to follow, you know, a, a particular mandate across the entire county. So I don't know if that looks, if that's something that you were talking about Calvin as that, that is an option that maybe look at doing as, as an add-on or if it's just a phone call we make and, and ask a question on something like that. I, I don't, I don't really know, um, where everybody else feels on, on maybe looking at something like that and not necessarily to change anything, but just looking at, trying to get some of the local control over this, um, as we move forward. Because it's, it's like, it's like everyone has said, a- a- all along, it's not going to go anytime soon. I mean, not till probably there's a vaccine or, or whatnot, but it would be nice if we could, um, have some of our, of the local control as we move forward and, and want to make changes.
It would be up to, it'd be up to the county and I, and I think that some of the, maybe some of the commissioners did think that they were overruling the, uh, may have thought that they overruled the, uh, the governor, but I, I think others, the, uh, discussion that was online, I think they were, they were told that this, this, this wasn't, uh, so, so you know, it's, it, you, you just don't know. I, I think it, the, as this, for this board, you can either individually do something and make, you know, obviously, you know, be the citizen and contact, contact the commissioners, uh, with your, with your views or as a board, uh, if, if, if you, if you pass a, have a motion passes, the majority passes, you can, you can say that, you know, that this, this specifically doesn't work. Uh, we request you to relook, you know, the age of, age of masks. You could certainly do that, you know? In the meantime, you've already adopted the governor's order, so you're in compliance.
Right. Yeah, agreed. And, and that's kind of where I think I'm at. I, I feel like it would maybe carry more weight as, if, as a district, we would ask, um, the county to relook at the policy they just implemented and see if it makes sense to make that a universal policy across the board and not just outside of school, you know? Um, I, I feel like if, if they want to keep it at five and up, then let's do that across the board, but let's not have it different in different places. Um, and, and so that's, that's kind of where I'm going with this is, um, and I don't know if that, if that requires a motion and, 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 and action. So, and, and if it does, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to make a motion. I don't know if anybody else had some comments beforehand, but, um, I would, would move that then as a district, we reach out to the county and ask them to relook at the implementation of the mask policy at the elementary age children, um, to, to line them up. So, so I don't know how the best way to word that, but maybe they, that the county will relook at the governor's mandate and, and align it with their own county mandates. So we don't have different policies for different places. So that's, that's my motion is that we could at least have that clarification by next meeting would be nice.
I would, uh, I, I would second that.
Okay, there's a motion and second. Any questions or comments? Tina, go ahead.
So, at the risk of sounding like I'm just being difficult, you know, we said a couple of times tonight that, that we're not in favor of them stepping on, on, on us and, and mandating and all of that. I, I think that that's very clear and I think that we've heard from people that have made it very clear that they are not in favor of the mandated, um, mask requirements. So, you know, at, I certainly, as a, as, as an individual or as anybody, I, I mean, we've had a lot of people tell us what we're doing is wrong. We've had a lot of people tell us what we're doing is right. While we welcome those, I certainly don't feel like it would be prudent of us as a board. Now individually, that's fine. Whether you agree with the mask mandate from the county or not, that's fine. But as a board, I don't know that it's something that we want to trailblaze on. Just my opinion.
Okay. I was going to quick reply. Um, so I understand, um, what you're saying. Uh, I get, I guess my question is that the, the county did pass their amendment to their mask policy with a vote of five to zero. So I don't feel like we're, we're not really mandating they do anything. We're just asking if they could take that same policy they just applied across the county and look and see if it makes sense for that to apply to schools as well, because it doesn't right now. So what they thought they applied across the county does not apply to schools. And that's all I'm asking is let's just look and see if it makes sense for it to go across the board and not just everywhere in the county, but except the school building. And, and so that, that's kind of where I was going with that. And I'm, I'm not telling them or mandating they do anything. I'm asking them to give us the control or, or, or they can make the mandate if they want, but let's just apply the policy the same way across the board and be consistent. And that, that's where I was going. Um, Robin, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering, um, if I'm, if I heard this right, because I thought I was hearing from Donna and Calvin that still the governor's order would trump that. So I thought that was like, that order was going to trump the county anyway. Am I misunderstanding?
Calvin?
The, uh, the, the legislation provides that the county can make less stringent requirements. And the county did make less stringent requirements, uh, on masks, like, like Justin said, for everyone else, but they did not apply that to the schools. And, and so they did not, they did not specifically overrule the governor's executive order, uh, twenty fifty-nine. And so, uh, you know, what, I know they're meeting again, I think Wednesday. So I don't know whether they're going to take this up Wednesday or not. Uh, but I mean, that's something they may do on their own accord, uh, something they may not want to do. They may have, this may be exactly what they, you know, what they wanted to not, to leave the governor's, uh, order alone. But, but they can, the, the, the Central County Commission and any county has the ability to, uh, to make less stringent requirements than what the governor's order is.
Okay. Robin, you give it? Okay. Matthew?
Yeah, I'm just going to reiterate. Really don't have a choice right now. And I don't agree with the motion you're making at this time. It, we need to follow the, the guidance we've been given by legal. And if it changes here in a week, that's fine. But for right now, where we're at, we should be just moving forward. And it's just, that was just my only comment.
Yeah, we, we did. We voted that through. So we didn't, we didn't stop that. We're just saying to look at, maybe having the county, uh, look at their own policies and apply it. Andy?
I was just going to say, we're, we're not, we're not, uh, saying that we're going to change anything. It's just advocating for the evidence that we've gathered and all the discussions, all the testimony we've watched, state board of education, county meetings. And I will mention in the last county meeting, there seemed to be some confusion as to whether or not school districts could act on their own. And so I think there's some confusion there. Um, and it seemed like some of the commissioners were saying that, um, you know, given the fact that they thought we would have the ability to act on our own, that they weren't, would vote a certain way. So I think it would be helpful if we truly thought that, um, that these restrictions should be limited on whether it's masks, temperature checks, some of these things we talked about more in detail. I think it'd be helpful if they had it, had something from, uh, our school board that talked about that. Again, we're not, we're not going to break the law. We're just advocating with all the evidence we've gathered that we think that this should be changed for and allow our school district to make those changes. So, uh, again, I think that's, that's where we're at. And I think it'd be helpful for us to, um, provide that guidance to the, especially to the county, um, as they maybe make a decision again this week.
I do want to chime in. I think for all those people, um, I know we have staff and we have families that have been watching here. It's nine, a little past nine thirty, um, tonight. And even leading up to this point, there's been, um, I think it's going to be important keeping up with the information, um, that we get in having those ongoing conversations. I know that they're probably from even viewers or even with, um, how the vote went. I know that they're probably from even viewers or even with how the vote went from four, three, that there are differing opinions on this piece and we realize it. So knowing that we're going to keep up with information is important. I think conversations that are ongoing, I appreciate the relationship and the in in working because we have staff that are wondering about how this impacts them coming to work and the good relationship with D N E A and hearing what are those concerns. They've been very good list of questions and trying to work through that and seeing how it's really applicable to them keeping staff safe and students safe in in problem solving. In our principal group, to be able to come here and to have, whether it's Mrs. Rush or Mr. Shipley, and Mr. Smith and Mr. Hamlin representing the different groups. But they've had hours of conversation just trying to problem solve about where we're at. So I think the people that are watching need to know that piece. And if things change and pivot, that is one reason the chart was written where we're at. We know we are faced with mandates right now. And I know you have a direction you're looking at, but for those, just summing it up, that's why we have different levels that we would look and if we needed to to adjust. But I understand what you're saying. I just want to clarify that for all those people that are watching, watching tonight.
Okay. Pam, you were next, go ahead.
I I don't have anything really do, so I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Mark, did you have something?
I just think it wouldn't harm to ask the county to to consider the school district a law as an item. We can go either way. This just tell us where that fits in their in their decision making. Or I think that's that's all that you guys are asking for with the second motion for next meeting is to just ask the county directly to consider it.
And okay. Oh, Pam, I see you, go ahead.
Yeah, I do have something that I I'm hearing two different things. I'm here, let's ask the county for clarification, and then we're advocating for change. And those I think those are two different things as far as how I'm prepared to vote. I'm not opposed to asking for clarification. If it was an intentional difference, you know, their mandate from like the states. But I'm not prepared to advocate for that they make a match. I I think we all have our opinions about masks and safety. And I think we kind of draw what we sometimes want to hear from what the people are saying. And I still, I still am not convinced that there's any harm in wearing masks. And if there's a shred of good in it, then why not do it? So that's just my, but I think we need to clarify the motion is my point.
Okay, I'll I'll attempt to since I made it basically, I mean, I could go either way, clear clarification or advocating. I think they're both going to kind of do the same thing, but clarification is fine. I mean, I just, I just would like some clarification from the county as to is their intent on on their amendment that they just recently passed. Or do they did they intend that it apply to the schools? And if they did, or is is that what they're going to do? I mean, or or is there intent, they're two separate items? Just because I I've talked to two different commissioners and and the intent, at least in their eyes, was that it was going to apply. And it was a five oh vote by the county. So that's kind of where it seems like it would make sense for the for the policies to line up across the county and not just apply to certain individual buildings. And and that's kind of where I was going with that.
And and I can tell from their from their legal counsel, it's he's he's clear that their intent was to not include schools, that that this was not meant to override the governor. So a clarification, I mean, if if they, you know, the each individual commissioner may have a different idea. But I can tell you the position from their the assistant county councilor, and so the county's legal team is, is that this does not override the go.
Right, right. Okay, were there any other last minute comments or questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any.
I I do think you need to clarify whether it's advocating for something different or just clarification. So because I think that is a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess.
I I would second for advocating that we make some changes based on the information we gathered, but.
Well, I guess if Calvin saying the clarification was already done, which is what it sounds like in from their legal counsel, I was necessarily meaning from just some of the commissioners individually, not not necessarily what they voted on. And then and then that's already, yeah, I've seen that they've already said that doesn't apply across the board. I I think what I was thinking was some of the commissioners thought when they were voting that it was going to apply across the board. I'm just in some emails that but so if we need to have that specific of detail, then I I would say that, yeah, I would like to ask the county, did they or should we align these policies? So yes, I guess it would be advocating, should we align the policies across the county to to make them be consistent and not not be different for schools and different for the rest of the county? So that that's the motion then would be that we would ask them to look at the policy they just implemented and see if they want to also implement that for or make revisions to her executive order to implement that in schools as well.
So so just again, clarification, that's not a recommendation, that's just that's just clarification on their intent?
No, I'm not, no, that's what I'm saying. So that I I'm asking that they would make it consistent across the board. So let either either we we make masks required for five and up across the entire county, or we or we implement in the schools where where twelve and up have to wear the mask and and below twelve, it's it's an optional procedure.
Does that include temperature checks?
I don't know if temperature checks in there, I don't know if they even took that up. So that would have to be something separate. I don't think they took up temperature checks in their debate. Did they, Calvin, do you know if they did?
Calvin, I think they did, didn't they? I don't know, temperature checks, they voted on masks, wasn't that the county voted, wasn't it? Was it three, two to not exempt schools?
I didn't see anything on their last on their on their resolution 105 dash 2020. It was adopted on July twenty two, 2020. They just, you know, that that was primarily versus age eleven years and under. They 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 altered that, and then the rest of that was held had to do with bars, restaurants.
I believe the vote was a special meeting on Friday, wasn't it?
Yes. I don't remember if it was temp checks or not, it may have been, yes.
And again, in their discussion, there was some, there was not clarity on the what power our school district had or school districts had. And so I think it would be helpful to follow Justin's motion to allow us the ability to do this on our own.
So that's kind of a almost a separate motion. Andy, I don't know if you're going to try to amend this, or do you want to do that after the fact? And we can vote on, or or do you want to make it one whole motion? If so, what was what were you trying to amend?
No, just just say your motion.
All right. So anyways, I my the my motion on the table is that we ask the county to implement their current mask policy that they that they applied in such a county across the board in schools as well. I think that's probably the easiest way to say it.
And I would, I would second that.
Okay, so there's a motion, a second to ask the county, all those in favor of that? One, two, three, four, okay. So that motion is going to fill three to four. Go ahead, Matthew.
I'm going to move that we moved, go ahead and go to the next item on the agenda.
We'll get there.
No, I've made a motion.
Hey, I I think we need to let everyone ask all their questions unless unless, I don't know, I guess Calvin, how does that work? I mean, can you just, can we vote right through agenda items? I guess I don't know.
No, I was just moving that we move on to the next item on the agenda.
Sure, but I think we're still discussing this one, but that's fine. Let me let let's let Calvin speak real quick.
Was there a there was a a motion, a second, and the vote, correct?
No, he's second. So he's making a new motion now that we quit discussing this and move on to the next agenda item.
If there's been a mo, if there's been a motion, a second, and and there was a vote, if there's any anything else, as president, if there's anything else on this item, you can continue and ask if there's anything else on the item. And then you can move it, then you can move the next next agenda.
Okay. All right, so before we move on, does anyone have anything else they want to discuss on any of this safety logistics plan or clarification orders?
Just a couple of things and.
Okay, Mark, then Robin.
Oh, sorry, Ron.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I had a couple of questions somewhat related, but if folks do the remote online learning only, can they then also attend like some of the like band and cross country? Not that there's a straight answer tonight, but that was a question that a parent had. And then a second, if we are going to continue or or delay starting school past Labor Day, will we be able to extend latch keys programs?
Okay, first, I'll talk with I'll start with latch key. And we are going to touch base, I can do it now, or Becky can do it underneath. We have an under summer programming to discuss latch keep. So we will address it wherever you would like us to do it. But we were planning to address the latch keep portion. So Becky, do you want to weigh in now, since that's the question on the table about latch key?
Yep, I will go ahead and talk about it now. We are waiting for a board approval of the calendar. But if the calendar that is proposed would be approved, then we would be proposing to extend summer latch key so that it would mirror what a normal school year would look like going up to the date, stopping prior to school like we normally would. So it would extend it. I believe it's four weeks out, and we would just continue on with an extension of that summer latch key program that is smoothly running currently. So that was like Mrs. Bohati said, was going to be part of our summer updates to talk with you about. And that's where we stand on that latch key program.
About activities, I think you asked, Mr. Hamlin would be able to weigh in on that piece, how that will look?
Yes. Kansas State High School Activities Association has always required a student to take one class in brick and mortar to participate in case you sanctioned activities or co-curricular activities. This year, however, they have waived that. So the straight answer to that question, a person could participate in just band or cross country if they chose the online option.
That take care of all your questions.
Mark, you good, okay.
Yep, thanks.
Robin, go ahead.
Yeah, well, mine was just going to go back to the the clarification that we were talking about earlier. And I was just going to say that I think if I would encourage everybody that wanted to go ahead and write or contact their county commissioner to do so, I just feel like that should be done on an individual basis rather than as a board. That's all I was going to say about the way I voted on that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Oh, Andy, go ahead.
So, Mr. Hamlin, just for clarification, you said cross country and band. I assume that was just an example. But if if somebody if somebody starts with remote learning, so can they then come to class, participate in band or a sport, and then just do remote learning that whole time? Just so I make sure I understand this.
My response was in the direct response to to Mark's question. He posed exactly those two examples. So I believe that a previous meeting, there was the, we wanted parents to make a commitment, a nine week commitment, be it online or in person. But again, Kasia will allow an individual to take online classes, participate in band, which is a Kasia sanctioned activity, cross country, football, any of the Kasia sports.
Okay. And and that that's something that we plan on allowing as far as you know?
We have historically had standards maybe slightly above Kasia, but have always tried to at least follow what they are putting out.
Okay.
Yes, this year, we can do it. Do I agree with it? Doesn't matter.
Okay. And I just have a couple of quick procedural questions, nothing or mainly probably for Holly or Becky, I'm not sure. But I just some, and it kind of relates to that. But the question was from some people who are choosing to go online only. How will classes like it may have been covered last meeting, but how are classes like P E or music or that kind of thing? Will they be able to have some sort of P E lesson from home or music? Is that something that can happen when you're online only? And then what were we thinking it will look like?
So for P E in a remote environment, and I think we actually had some pictures in fourth quarter that were out on social media where we had students in front of their devices standing, stretching, being led by their teachers to engage in physical activity within their homes. They were also given choice boards and logs to complete activities outside the home. If you remember, we had the steps around the world where elementary and middle school students worked together at the direction of their P E teachers and were challenged to get out and do different activities and to log their steps. And they logged enough to actually have walked around the world. And so there are some of those things that can be done, both with younger kids and with older kids. I mean, if you think about it from even like a fitness app perspective, that you see adults engaging in quite a bit of a time. Those are, in fact, remote lessons and classes. There's a bike commercial where they're doing many of those same kinds of things virtually. From a music perspective, last spring, we approved a secondary instrumental and choir music program called Smart Music where students can practice and record themselves practicing as well as doing sight reading and notation and send those recordings to their teachers as well as virtual lessons. So those would be some of the ways that we would be looking to engage students in those activities remotely. I will also say that we have learning kits. So again, remote learning for fall of 2020, the beginning of this year will look different than it did for spring of last year, not just in the sense that we're asking people to make sure we're tracking attendance and grading through remote learning logs. But we have also had a work group from our task force of educators that have gotten together over the summer, and they have developed learning kits for some of those classes. And we started with just semester one and said, okay, if your students were learning in just a remote environment, what would be some of those essential materials that mom and dad couldn't go to the grocery store or Walmart and get necessarily that we as educators have access to? And then we know that they're going to need that we can front load. So for many of our classes, we have those learning kits ready to go that we will also be working to send out to families that are working in a remote environment. So I think that's something important for parents to know is that, you know, the remote learning option that we're offering families will look different this fall at the beginning of the year than what it looked like last spring, both from a accessibility perspective, from a teacher training and implementation perspective, and then also from some of those things, whether it's like the smart music software or the learning kits that we're able to provide them in the way it's for.
Okay, thank you, Holly. That's that's actually good to hear. I know that question a few times, especially on the P E side and music and music as well. The last one I had that I got a few different times in emails was in regards to lunch. And it's actually for lunch for the remote only students. And I don't know who would best answer that, but I'm just curious. How is that going to look? I know right now everyone can go over to the central kitchen, drive through, pick up a lunch. But how will that look throughout the fall? And I assume, I don't know, but how will lunch is probably won't be free as they are now. But how does it look to go pick one up and verification required, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer this. Mrs. Burke Jones, I'm the director of operations. So for lunch with an online student, that would during the school year would be charged just like a regular lunch would be. So if if we set up some type of a pickup option, you know, curbside pickup, those students would just have to come through, and they would be recorded, and lunch would be charged just as if they were in school.
So they would they would come to like a setup location, pick them up, and you just charge it? Okay, all right, thanks, Burke. Okay, that's all that's all of my questions on this return to learn for now. If no one else, oh, Tina, go ahead.
Thank you. Holly, I know I asked this last time, but on the hybrid, explain to me again, because I'm still kind of confused as to why that's not being offered as a third option. But explain to me again, when we would go into hybrid mode, when they make it more restrictive?
Right, so when we have our class sizes that are smaller, that will Right, so when we have our class sizes that are smaller, that will allow us to do a typical in-person class with the physical distancing. So for instance, if you think about this last spring, I believe our group sizes were under 10, which would be nowhere near what we would typically have in a class. And so in that instance, we would take our class sizes and divide them up amongst the days so that everybody gets some in-person time and then deliver the rest of the instruction at home.
Okay, so, okay, so it's all class size dependent. Okay, all right, I'll wrap my head around that some more. So then my next question would be, since we presented this plan in finale, sorry, that's not the right word, since we presented the plan, both parts of it now, does this start the 48-hour timeframe that they have to change their mind whether they're going online or in person? Or is that at another date?
So we would go ahead and work and send a message out to families that would start the clock of the 48-hour window. So that time clock would be starting shortly after, most likely tomorrow morning is what we've discussed to make sure that our families have time to process the information we presented here tonight.
Yeah, so our thought, just to chime in briefly, turn on the video for a minute. Hello, everyone. Our thought was that we would send that message tomorrow. We did not want to fully start that clock, but there are a lot of people tuned in right now, but we do not want to expect that people's 48 hours would start at whatever time this evening we wrap up here. So we'd like to start that from the time we send the communication tomorrow, if that is okay with you all.
Katie, there is a lot of people also online, you know, online. Can you talk a little bit? And we understand there's going to be a lot of questions as we work through. We have, we are changing how school is and we want to work with people on that. We encourage, I will say, parents and staff, if you have questions, talk to your building principal. They can work through and talk through a lot of it and it'll help alleviate, I think, sometimes a lot of those questions or anxiety or just wonder. They reach out to them, they are back. But can you talk, Katie, a little bit about their also is a question-answer piece that started? Because some of those frequently asked questions may be able to be found where, Katie?
Sure, per your guys' direction and what we had discussed. Do anyway, we did start that return to learn place, return to learn page slash COVID-19 information, which can be found right on our website, easily accessible in the menu bar. On that page, we have started a frequently asked question doc of a lot of those consistent questions that we were seeing often. We have an email on there that we shared last time. That information that USD 260 that people can submit questions to. Again, a lot of those consistent questions, we have began adding those on there. We are still working through getting a lot of answers. Of course, and then a lot of very specific questions. Many people on the screen have filled it, a lot of those made calls to individuals. So we are definitely working through every question that we can answer, but the general ones, again, on the return to learn page on the district website.
Thank you. And I just was going to say that I would, I agree with giving him some time to process because there's been a lot discussed this evening and I know there's a lot of people who are still trying to make that decision. So I'm okay with giving him a delayed time. I just don't want it to stretch out over weeks.
Yeah, I would echo Tina. I mean, I would hate to start the clock today. I mean, this sometime this week would be great if we had a, an answer back. But I would need to have some time because this is a pretty big decision. And I had one last question I saw on my notes here, but it was a very specific question in regards to the ROTC program at the high school. And so Mr. Hamlin is on for that, but really the question from a parent was if their students, once again, are remote only, are they able to still be in that kind of a program or is that, is that doable still? How would that work for ROTC?
Well, ROTC is not a CACIA sanctioned activity. So I would respectfully ask to have the evening to be able to visit with Colonel Dillard and my administrative team before making any type of statement on that.
Okay.
It just, I, I start to get into these where when we pick and choose, I wonder what's the motivation? Why, why are you not? But then you're going to come to a class with a whole bunch of kids. I'm getting editorial, sorry. If I may, let me check with Colonel Dillard tomorrow and I can either give you a response or that parent could email me directly and I'm happy to help them out.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
And we can add that to that frequently asked questions doc too. So if there's anyone else on there.
Okay, great. That'd be good. Okay, I think, I don't see any more hands. I do, actually. Mr. Watkins, go ahead.
Well, I've got quite a few questions from parents. I guess the one thing I would ask is that they, and I've passed along, if we don't cover something tonight to reach out to the district. It kind of seems to be the stance of the board and that's okay, I think, on many of these issues to fill in some of the details that we just can't hit tonight. We don't have enough time. One of the, one of the questions that I did want to ask is some teachers that ask about being able to have access to their classroom in the case that we did go remote everywhere, would they have access to their classroom to be able to do their lessons, those kind of things? Or would they just be expected to go, go straight to home like was done in the spring?
Holly, you want to take that one?
So as long as health guidance and our rate of spread allowed it, we would encourage and like for our teachers to teach in their classrooms, whenever they feel like it is necessary to do so. What I will say, I think one of the factors that influenced that this spring was the stay-at-home order. So we would look to, to our local health guidelines. I mean, we definitely cannot afford to have a whole wing or a whole building of teachers go out sick on us, but at the same time, we understand that it's sometimes important to be able to put things up on your whiteboard when you're explaining. So and we would make every effort to allow them to come in and teach in their classrooms, even in a remote environment and encourage that. And then also, if they needed to, if we weren't able to do that, we would, as we did in the spring, allow them to come and grab the items that they felt were needed from their classrooms in small groups. So we have a plan either way, depending upon what restrictions are in place. We definitely want to make sure that we're keeping our staff as safe as possible in any scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kippenberger, if we can just, I want to make sure for Mrs. Purneer's piece, it right now, how it stands, the board has said, when, when Ms. Carlson sends out the information to inform everyone, we have 48 hours since then for people to make that selection. It is a careful balance because it is important that staff also have time to make this selection. But I just want it for clarity because I know the question will come right when we get off. Katie will be asking, is that mean, are we still on, you know, 48 hours from that piece? Or not for parents? Are you extending that to another day?
So I would like to know from the principals or from you, what, what are they, what's doable? I mean, because I know before there was some concern if there was too much time, then it would, it might affect them being able to figure out online and in person. So maybe what do they think would, would make sense?
We appreciate you asking. I have, we have principals on, so we'll let them chime in of where, where they feel that timeframe if they choose. High school, I know with schedule, we'll start with you.
And I'm sorry, there's been so much disgust. Would someone please clarify me what you want me to answer?
I think right now on knowing about online versus remote, originally it was said after the board approves, which has happened now with safety, security plan and the ready-to-learn plan, parents would have 48 hours to make their selection. Once you have the selection, then I know you can start planning schedules accordingly. So it was brought up, do we need to have a little bit more time, but not too much time? Because staff need to be able to have time to plan. So and we, because we can't do teaching assignments and stuff until we get that portion done. So and your schedule, so where, where, where are you at?
I'll be very point blank. I have to know this week. This is, this is just getting teetering on. It's serious. I have to know this week. I know last meeting we said a 48-hour window. If we want to extend that through day's end, 3:00 PM Thursday, we can do so. But we have to know if you want Derby High School to function, and I've got to know this week.
I know I'm not the principal on there, so I'm going to let others chime in too, but I would just have to echo that for the sake of transfer meetings and things like that that are also scheduled as well.
I, and I would, I would echo that as well. We have our in-district transfer meeting on Friday. I think elementary is maybe a day or two before that. So, you know, that's, that's when really, starting next Monday, I think is make or break time on getting schedules done. It's hard to know right now because I don't have a good feel for how many of our students are picking remote or how many of our staff are at this time. You know, obviously, I think the conversation tonight helps give people more information to make those decisions. But, you know, I'm really going to be thanking my counselors when, when they get in and start working on schedules and working together with them. So it's definitely going to be a, a challenge.
And working with all of these principals, I would say the same thing. We have a lot of work to do with each other, a lot of collaboration to do. We do have, obviously, we're flexible with meetings changing and, and all the time being as flexible as possible. But we do need to get these decisions made. We need to communicate with, with staff. We're working to make those placements and make sure that we are set to meet the needs of all of our students. So I would echo what those principals are saying and we're working, we're already working together. We're going to keep working together the rest of this week. And that's just my, my input, not as a building principal, but as someone who collaborates with them daily, that would be my two cents there.
And I think I would just wrap it up to reiterate those same things and a couple of the board members. Our goal is to keep your kiddos safe and put them in the best environment and we just need a starting point. And so the sooner we know, we, we know you're in a difficult spot, but we need parents to make a decision one way or the other that allows us to get staffing. And we're promising you that our program that we are going to put forward, if we do do enroll, remote, won't be the same. I've heard a lot of comments about wasn't strong enough or didn't like this or didn't like that. We want to have a better plan, but we need the information of who that plan is for and setting up the safest environment. Our transfer meeting is Thursday and I never want a home boundary kid to feel scrunched in their classroom because we went through the enrollment or the transfer process and put kids in a classroom. So I would say we desperately need families to, you know, hear the information, make a decision based off their family situations like Dr. Alvarado referred to earlier and go ahead and enroll so that we can move forward and then make decisions with the information that we have the next day and then the next day.
And from another middle school perspective, I'm confident we'll do this, but with Katie sending that information to parents that has to go out and we have a vehicle to do that with Skylar's. And then what I would like as a, if you would help me out as a board, if you get those questions, send them on to the appropriate principal to get those answered right away. On Katie's communication, have them contact us immediately with our email, with our, with our phones. We are here to answer their questions. We answered a lot today. There's a whole lot more out there. But get them to us immediately and we'll answer their questions. We'll stay as long as they need to do that. But again, I'll echo their concerns. We have to get started. I need to be logging in information for those transfer meetings by noon on Thursday. So we can stretch it a little bit later than that, but Friday's too late. So the key to me is communicating, getting it out there and then kind of is what it is at that point. I don't know that three days would do any more than two if we communicate well.
I would just echo again, not a principal, but would echo what our administrative team is saying. It's important for us to have that enrollment information so that we can plan staffing, support curriculum materials for learning kits, all of those things appropriately so that our students experience the best and most seamless plan right from the beginning of their school year this year.
Thank you again for asking. It sounds like unanimous from the administrative group that the sooner the better with it.
Okay, I think Matthew had hand up first there.
Yep.
Nope, not anymore. Okay. Mark and then Andy.
My question, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Also wanted to reemphasize that it's, in the decision, obviously, a lot of people are going to have questions. There's no 100% answers or plans, no crystal ball, but I think we agreed that after nine weeks, is it nine weeks, that this first period will be that you can change. It's not, you're not locked in after that. But we are locking, asking you to commit for the first nine weeks. And we might be able to offer a hybrid in the second period and moving further. Is that correct?
I, I need to make this comment though. If a tremendous number of people choose online, there will be impact to course offerings at Derby High School. If those same people then choose while I'm coming back in the building the second nine weeks, I can't just miraculously produce the college algebra again. So that just needs to be out there. This is not a buffet to just pick and choose and it's all going to be offered. That cannot happen.
Andy?
Yeah, I guess my, my only comment, and I get the fact that we need to make a decision, is just make if, and I appreciate principals' feedback and that, that parents can reach out directly to them. Because I think there still are a lot of just questions that will need to be answered in these 48 hours. So I would ask that in the communication, we make sure that we provide some emails or, and I'll make sure, I think that's a good suggestion to pass it on to the principals. But I, I think there's going to be a lot of people that still have questions in these 48 hours trying to make a decision, maybe not having all of their questions answered tonight. And I know in the essence of time, we cannot go through them all tonight, unfortunately.
So on that, I'm happy to do whichever way. I don't think it ever hurts to provide too many emails. I do with that information at USD 260, that funnels to me and what I've been doing so far is getting that out to the, the applicable person. That way there's just that one email that they need to remember, click on there and then I'm, I'm happy and happy. That's what I have been doing is getting it to each kind of appropriate person to answer. But if you'd like to see each principal's listed in there, I'm happy to do that as well.
Tina?
Um, I, I was just going to thank Mr. Hamlin because that's something that I was thinking about and, and I know that I've, I've had a couple of questions about electives and, and course offerings. And we aren't trying to limit anybody. We certainly don't want to keep people from taking things that they want to take. But we have to make sure we have numbers there and we have to make sure that we aren't putting him in a position. Because like you said, things aren't planned on a dime. I mean, when you have that many kids, you can't just say, okay, one day we're not going to have this elective and the next day, guess what, it's back. So and, and I know we are kind of asking people to take a leap of faith right now and, and make a decision. But again, it comes down to with the information that they have, you know, we, we have to make the best decision. And then, and I would encourage everybody to think about that and make the decision that's best for their family moving forward. So again, I'm fine with it going out tomorrow. Beyond that, I think we're pushing the limits of what we can give our administrators time to come up with because we do have transfer meetings we have to go forward. And, and we have people who are waiting on those transfer meetings to know whether they're even going to be in our district. So by prolonging it, we're, we're putting our admin and our teachers in a bind as well. So.
Okay, so it appears that the majority would prefer to keep the current, I think, not, not extend is what it sounds, sounds like to me. Maybe stick with, if it goes out in the morning, then we're looking at this would be until Thursday morning. Is that right?
I, might I suggest that it could be 48 hours from the time it goes out. So whether that's eight, eight A. 8am, whatever time we schedule it, but.
Okay. I think that's Mark had intended in his original order or motion that when, whenever it actually gets sent out, it's 40 hours from that time.
Right.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. All right. If anybody has any other comments on that, we can, or let's just stick with that.
We'll plan on the 48 hours. And I would, if I, Mr. President, if I could think, I know we have on this topic many people that came together to be here, and they've been on the call for quite a while. So I know we have Dr. Alvarado. We thank you for coming out and being assistance tonight. And Dr. Coleman, Coleman, for helping with us too and providing resources. Donna Whiteman from KASB Legal, and I know Calvin Rider, our attorney tonight. In addition to, I think, to get to this point again, and we'll continue, but our principals have really worked to problem solve a lot. I mean, it is, this is a huge task, and you know, they'll work to get things answered and things as quickly as possible. This is a huge feat for everybody, and also, you know, staff to process and working again with our DNEA. So I just want to say thank you to everybody. Bring the questions if you guys are out there. We want to work and get those answered for people, and we'll provide reports back to you.
Okay, so with all that being said, I think we're going to go ahead and move on to our second report, item 5B, and that is the update on summer programming with Heather Bahati.
All right, every standing agenda, we provide updates. Part of the report, probably the, the most of the report was going to be reporting on latch key tonight, but if Becky or Holly have anything else from last week of updates on anything from latch gear primetime, this is the time we would provide that.
Okay, does, Andy, go ahead.
I was just going to say for pre-teen primetime, we have continued as we have been working to finish our July program. You may have seen on Twitter, social media, that there was a hot air balloon launch that kids had. It was social distancing. And so I really commend the staff and the DRC partnership there for working to make that a rewarding and exciting experience for our students, and also to continue with the distancing and the mask wearing to keep them so that they're following the protocol. They've done a really nice job of that. And our numbers for that program look about the same.
I did not have further updates on latch key. I was going to share just a little summary about how things were going. They're still going smoothly. No changes there. Everything's going well, and then I did have that just proposal to extend it, so that is all I have on that.
We'll stand for any questions you have.
Okay, were there any questions or comments on the summer programming update? Okay, I'm not seeing any. And Heather, on this, I would like to continue these, and then even into the year, maybe we can look at updates on return to learn, kind of like we had mentioned, maybe. Just as we go forward, that would be probably good and helpful as we can just see the table movement. Okay, next up, item, or we're going to move to discussion. And item 6A is our Verizon Jetpack Device Agreement with Dr. Holly Putnam Jackson and Dennis Elidge.
Hey, good evening again, Dr. Putnam Jackson and Dennis Elidge, I believe, so he will be chiming in and helping as well. We have a proposal here, actually a discussion item for Verizon check Jetpack Device Agreements. And we already have a district account with Verizon that we are using, and as part of our remote instruction, and if you'll remember in the spring, we had teachers do a rating of our students who showed up to class, and those that experienced spotty internet connections. And we have projected out the number of those students who we estimate may need some support. We were very fortunate in the spring that we received a community grant that families could apply for in order to have subsidized internet access. With this particular agreement, what we are asking is that we are able to work with Verizon to provide jet packs, which is a wifi hotspot that we would check out to families. They would be willing to give us 301 of those jet packs. We do not pay for them until they are turned on and checked out to a family. And you can see in your cover memo there that they are estimated to be monthly fees of about 40 bucks a month. We have researched Kajee and a couple of other providers and found that for a slightly lesser price, not much, it was more like 38, they would give us three to five, I think it was gigabytes of data, which we know that our students would run through quickly. So this one with Verizon appears to be a much more profitable deal, and also one that we can manage by receiving devices before everyone taps into the devices and they are no longer available from a jet pack perspective, and then also not being charged for them until we actually know that we have families that need them and can turn them on. And Dennis, do you have information to add to that?
Just on the control side, we have the ability at any time to turn the devices on or off. When we do turn them off, billing stops for us. So if we do have a student that is abusing or loses their device, we are able to stop service and cease billing. We are not committing to a contractual timeframe of a year, a month, or any timeframe at all.
Okay, so with that, questions? We'll stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, Matthew, go ahead.
Just a quick clarifying question. You made a comment about another provider priority asking about or paying for limiting the gigabyte data. The jet packs have no limit. Is that, I didn't hear you say that, so.
Yep, the jet packs have unlimited data, which is, yep, for what we need.
All I needed, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, and just for the audience, there are also something you, you can filter, control the data or access. I think it's a great idea, and I definitely would support that.
To clarify on the filtering, the filtering is not performed through Verizon or through this service. The filtering is performed on the student devices using the systems that we already have in place. So whether they're connecting through this or through their home wifi, they are filtered the same way.
Okay. Any other, Tina?
Dennis, are these items that are being checked out and expected to be returned? I know you said we can turn them off if they're abusing the data or if they're lost, but are, are they checking them back in, or is this? Are we essentially giving, gifting it to them? Well, not gifting them because we're charging them, but.
Technically, we would ask for them to be checked back in. However, if they are lost, we are not charged a fee for that, and we can order a replacement for free.
But in the case of an abuse situation, much like our Chromebook policy, we can deny them having another one checked back out to them, right?
Okay, that is correct.
Pam?
So do the, do the students or their families pay for this, or is the school covering the $40 a month?
So we were planning to cover the $40 a month for families that demonstrate a need for assistance, or put in a request seeking care funds and/or donations.
Okay.
And will this like provide internet for the whole house? I mean, so they could theoretically, you know, I mean, could use it for whatever, ever you want. It's not, there's, there's not any. I guess I missed a part on, on data cap. Did you say that there wasn't any data cap on there, or?
That is correct. There is no cap on data. It's unlimited. However, we do have the ability through our console to limit the number of devices that can connect to it. So we could opt to only allow a single device to connect to it, or we could leave it open, and anybody that wanted to connect to it could. At this point, we haven't made a determination on which direction we want to go.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
I guess that does make me think of another question. Would there be a little bit of training? Just, I mean, like my own router, I have to be able to sort of guard the access to that. Would we provide some of that, maybe?
Yeah, so we are providing parent trainings for both the learning model and for accessing student information, and so we would certainly be looking to embed some of that training in there for families as well.
And then I know what everybody else is thinking. Where do we sign up? I'll take that for $40 unlimited.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I'm not seeing any. Dennis and Holly, when do you guys need, is there, is this a time sensitive thing, or?
If we can have it sooner rather than later, that would be helpful. I know that Dennis has already reached out so that they're holding those for us, Dennis. As far as timelines, is it advantageous to have it confirmed sooner rather than later?
It is. That allows us to get them confirmed and on their way to us. As you can imagine, a lot of districts are opting to do this, so with stock levels being what they are, the sooner we get our order in, the, the more likely we'll get the stock in before school starts.
Okay, and this is being paid for, paid for out of care's money and then possibly donations for the monthly fees, is that right? Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other comments?
Justin, I'll make a motion to move it to action.
A second. Third.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move the Verizon Jetpack Device Agreement to action. All those in favor, moving it to action. Seven zero, and it'll become action item C. Okay, all right, so that wraps up our discussion items.
Hey, Justin, I don't know what the timeframe is for the rest of the meeting, and maybe administration can talk, but could we take a five minute break? I think we may have a little bit more than 30 minutes of discussion with upcoming items, but it's, we're going on four hours. Could we take a five minute recess? Actually, I would make a motion that we take a five minute recess.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to take a five minute recess. All those in favor? So I got seven zero. Let's, Donna, what time exactly do we need to make sure we're back on?
Oh, I have 10:28 right now, so in five more minutes.
Okay, so 10:33. Sounds good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have 10:33, so we're going to get back to it. And I think we're on to our action items with the first item, action 7A, it are 2020, 2021 school year calendar with Heather Bahati.
Thank you, Heather Bahati Superintendent. With the 2020, 2021 calendar, after the original executive order came out, and then obviously, when state board had a vote regarding the whether they would uphold the order, it brought questions about when that start of school should come, whether we should bring together our calendar committee again. So we did reconvene on our calendar committee to take a look at, and here we started getting emails and, and questions about when should school start? So taking a listen to that and generating, so we started with generating interest, the calendar committee. So we generated a list of those interests, everything from, you know, interest of regarding when it would be a good health safety piece of coming back to school, from keeping our quarters balanced. So the calendar committee created a list of that. And then from there, we started talking about what are options calendar wise from those interests that were developed could be created. So I appreciate those in calendar committee members that are on tonight, appreciate their time and effort, because normally the calendar committee process would take a couple months on that, and this committee stuck around this week and our last week and worked on a, last week, a plan and did that all within that amount of time, so we could get it out there to, to, to vote. So from there, the two calendars that generated interest were one, having a start date after Labor Day. Another, and that was with start date with students, or another option was to keep our current calendar. And then they worked on an option of something in between. So that's where you saw option two, which was a start date in between that more, more like August twenty six. So August twenty six is option two. Option one is the other one they worked on, which was after Labor Day. And then the original calendar. So those were the three, three items. From that, they looked and had worked to be creative regarding options this year, under the circumstances to allow and making sure staff, and that's an interest, had enough PD time and time to work to prepare the plans and allowing that. So they knew there'd be more upfront time. So the calendar option one that vote wise went out was the preference. So we sent a survey out and that went to families and that went to staff. And the survey results are for those that are watching, and we had a good turnout. Seven hundred and thirteen staff members voted and sixty four percent were in favor of option one. Thirty point two of option two and five point eight was our current calendar. When we look at the families, they also supported option one at fifty one point one percent. And then option two, thirty two point six percent and the current calendar at sixteen point three. So obviously what we had been hearing either one or two, the ones the calendar committee created were more favorable than our current calendar under the circumstances at this time. So I want to focus tonight on option one to provide you some more details and information. So you know what we'd be requesting approval. The calendar committee's recommendation is for you to accept the work that they have done. They worked hard on this calendar. And we have families and staff that are supporting that. But a few items to keep in mind. Start date for those that are watching with students would be September eighth. And the last day of school would be a half day. It would be on May twenty six. Contact time would be important. I think that you are aware of of that. With the most recent with the board approval of the day. And on the original calendar that was most recently board approved, originally student contact time, there was one seventy point five days at elementary and one seventy one point five at secondary. With this calendar, it is a net decrease of nine days of student seat time to be a hundred and sixty one point five at elementary and one sixty two point five at secondary. Where those days equate for it is about time again for staff to work. It's changing student contact time to staff. Staff work time, in-service time. In-service time counts as half a student seat time. So it's half of time. I think it's important to note too, teacher contract day is one eighty four point five. So that, that's another piece to note, and the calendar sticks with one eighty four point five in there. The other piece that was talked about, that is an important piece for staff and families. We know we had boundary changes going into this year. We also know ending the year, we did not get to do the visits to school and if you want to say meet the teacher back to school nights. So that was important and there is time that is built in there, looking at individual appointments and buildings to schedule. And this calendar has September second and September third. So families would be able to go into the buildings and meet with staff to start, start the year. And also a chance to ask, ask questions at that point, too. So those are a few highlights during that. I'll stand for any questions that you have. But again, I think this is a case where you have staff and families, calendar committee did a great job coming together to make some recommend. A calendar put together and recommendations and something again for our staff with the professional development and being able to get the school to provide that adequate time. So that will stand for questions. Mr. Joyce served on that committee, I should point out. So feel free to, he can help ask or answer any questions. And we also had, that is on the side, we had, let's see, Mr. Shipley was on there. And we had Mr. Addis that was on there and is a resource. Dr. Holly Putnam Jackson was on there, I think. Okay, and Katie Carlson.
Matthew?
So just a couple of quick comments. I know we could have a whole bunch of questions asked tonight or everything else. But I, I'm going to tell you right now, the, the calendar committee probably already asked them and ran through just about every scenario you could think of. All I can do is echo what Heather said. They did a hell of a job in such a short amount of time. I know we had teachers in there. We had parents in there. We also had Joel in there representing the union, a couple others. This was the best situation possible that could come out of that. We were given the task of, it seemed like we were given, they wanted some kind of in-between me, in, in-between calendar and one that, that met the governor's order. And calendar committee took that to heart and came up with two good calendars. And then we turned it out to the district for a vote. And I think the vote kind of tells you how things should probably go. So like you said, it's all comments, more or less. You feel free to ask me or Joel or Heather, anybody else that was there, any questions you'd like?
Okay, Tina?
Heather, with option one and option two, I know option two called for a neutral loss as far as monetary loss to some classified. Have we looked at ways to bring them in so that they, on option one, so that we aren't losing that time?
I'm glad you asked that. It must be because it's tension, right? Because we met today again with the calendar committee to review the survey results because that's always important. If you're going to ask people's input, again, say, if you're asking people's input, you need to look, you know, and use that as guidance. So when we say that, one of the things that was pointed out multiple times that you're, that was brought up was what about classified? Because they are losing it on option one. So we will go back and see what we can do regarding that to possibly incorporate so they wouldn't lose time. But that is something we're going to look at and work with building principles on. Right now, when we had the initial conversation and building principles are on there, they really thought with some of these new right now mandates and requirements, we're going to need some additional help. So we thought maybe we could add minutes or something like that to the day. And Becky was gonna, we're gonna look at some options there. But yes, to answer your question, we feel we can do something. So classified would not lose any pay on that option. So that is, I'm glad you brought that up because that was a concern of the committee in wanting to take care of our classified staff, which is very.
I do agree. And so when do classified report back on this option one? When would they, would they report back on September eight?
I'll let Becky chime in. They're reporting back a little bit early.
They would report back on the thirty first, which is five days before our students come. That's a few more days than usual. So they would have some extra time there. And, and our principals do have plenty of things for them to do during that time. And then like Mrs. Bohati mentioned, we are looking for some other ways to make up even some more of that time so that they don't lose pay. There has been discussion about adding minutes to the day, or we can look at some other alternatives. We want to brainstorm with our building principals and make sure that, that we are being efficient with their time and making sure that they have meaningful work to do. But we're definitely working on that and looking at some options. But to answer your initial question, they will report on the thirty first on that calendar, which is five days prior to the students returning.
The other item that was brought up from the, at the calendar committee meeting was the seat time someone brought up. You know, it is a loss, but in looking at and trying to brainstorm everywhere and every way, it was outweighed at this point to be ready and have meaningful and, you know, we're bust stuff. We have to change all of these things going on that staff need time. So they felt that that outweighed at this point, and I would support that from that calendar committee, that our staff need time.
And, and I would agree with that. I mean, we have buildings that are still right down to the wire with construction. Then I know our teachers haven't even had a chance to get into their classroom. And, and I'm very supportive of option one. My only concern is the, the, the four and a half hours that the classified would be losing. And if we can find a way to make that up, I mean, you know, we have to look at all of our staff. There's no reason why they should be penalized for an outbreak that nobody has any control over. So.
Yeah, we will work to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Andy?
Heather, in regard to the, the number of days of student contact time, so are we not required to have so many hours that they meet? Or that the, the students are taught? I mean, how does that work if we're reducing student contact hours?
We are. We are at, it's a thousand one hundred and sixteen hours. And then that is for, with the exception of seniors, and they have less hours. So these calendars meet that. Right now, initially with how we have things built, we have more than that piece. We have looked at that, and I can tell you that's what took some additional time, if you want to say, and then working. And we had another, if you want to say Zoom meeting with that group, just because our hours weren't. We are working to refine that. How about that? To be able to get those surveys out. But we meet the amount we need to have on this option.
So we, we wouldn't be adding like fifteen, twenty minutes to the, to a day to make up for any time. Basically, the year would be shorter than it normally would have, correct? As proposed in option one, the year would be shorter than normal.
Teachers are working the same amount of days. Students have nine less days.
Right, that's what I mean. Students would have less days than normal with these plans. Okay.
Contact time. But the.
I understand.
Yeah, and we meet the requirements. And you have to remember how things that count as student contact time and that can be figured different. So, you know, conferences count as a full day, like a kid's there in seat time. And if you count in-service time, that's half seat time. So as we're doing more in-service time, that really is counting as a half seat time day, if that makes sense. So we had to look at all this calculation. So when I, I just am clarifying for those people that are watching, when you say seat time, it's, there's different criteria in there about what counts as seat time.
And that, and that's the only reason I'm asking. I'm not disagreeing with shortening it to, to make this work. I guess I'm just trying to clarify for a parent, are they going to have a longer day? Or it sounds like maybe there's some time that's counted that, that really isn't curriculum time necessarily that we normally count. And this year, we're cutting back some of those things. So we're I guess seat time where they're getting an instruction may not actually be a loss of nine days. They may not have gotten that fully before, is what you're saying.
Um, I think right now it is, for the most part, loss of student, actual student seat time. Because converting that, I think to be fair for everyone, it is converting it saying teachers need time, staff need time to prepare for these different. We're doing, we're, we're running two modes of learning and who's going to do it and kind of all of those. Who's going to, just like earlier, we still got to figure out lunch. You know what I mean? Who's going to, and how is this all going to work in a school? So that times for that. It's a very good question you have, but yes, it is.
Did we lose her?
My lost her.
Think we lost her.
Okay.
So, all right.
And I just had one, one other question, but I think we, they, the administration has addressed it. But as far as classified goes, how that looks, it sounds like there will be something that's, that we come up with. I guess it would be helpful for us to know if that's going to happen or if that's the intention. I think it sounds like it's the intention. But that was one concern I had too, was the loss of their hours.
And we will address the loss of hours. I feel confident after talking with principals today, we can definitely find ways to make up those days.
Okay, Mark?
Just for my sake and everybody else watching that might not understand that, what are we talking about when we say loss of hours? And what are we trying to do to help?
Of course. Right now, when we talk about loss of hours, and right now classified have. And when we're talking about classified, this is not our twelve month classified. These are more are considered nine month classified. That it's their normal working days. Usually classified staff work when students are in session. But whenever you start altering a calendar to allow for to meet the teacher nights or back to school nights with parents or more time for staff to do professional development, that cuts into those student days, as we shared, there's nine days. So we are able to make five of those, we said, for professional development and do things. There were four point five remaining that we said at this point that we didn't have something earmarked. But having further conversation, and we feel that is also important to make sure we're taking care of them. We will, we will work to get four point five days built in somewhere. So it's really what they typically would work year to year, what we have budgeted for within our budget.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Move to.
Okay, we have, yeah, we have a motion to approve option one.
I would just second what Tina said, that teachers should not lose any pay. And if option one works to do that, I would second that.
Okay, I think Robin, Matty got you right before you did there on the second, but.
All right, not to interrupt the motion. I just want to be more, one bit of clarity on that. Teachers do not lose pay in either option. It's classified support staff that they were working on the intent to make up those days that were lost. But teachers do not lose out and they're working to find that time to make up for the support staff. Sorry to chime in there.
Thank you for the clarity. I was just going to clarify that as well.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, and I'll echo Tina and Andy and everyone here. That I would like to ensure that we find those four and a half days so they don't lose any pay. Because it's, it's just the right thing to do in this time. So, but we do have a motion in a second. So all is in favor of option, oh, Matthew, go ahead.
Do we need to amend the motion to make that mandatory or?
Could do that.
Let's go ahead and amend the motion then to option one and to make sure they have their days made up.
Okay, Robin, you still second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve option one on the calendar and to, and to make up the four and a half days for classifieds. There's no loss in pay. All those in favor? Seven zero.
Very good. Thank you. And again, thank you to our calendar committee. That was quick work to get that brought forward. And we appreciate everybody that went on to provide feedback on voting.
Okay. Yes, and, and I also would say thanks to everybody that spent time over the last couple of days making a full calendar or three, two full calendars for the school year. That's definitely a lot of work. Next up, item seven B under action is our board policies with Heather Bahati.
Sure, at the last Board of Education meeting, we brought before you several different policies for your consideration from the updates and tonight would request your approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Matthew, a second by Mark. All those, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? Seven zero. And last action item we have tonight is the item we move to action, which is the Verizon jetpack device agreement with Dr. Holly Putnam Jackson and Dennis Elidge. And I do have one question, Dennis, that I was just thinking about as well. These are stated as unlimited data. Is that unlimited high speed all the time? Or is that, will they throttle down if they reach a certain amount to like a slower speed, you know?
That is a good question. Yes, they do throttle it down after a particular amount. I don't know the amount, but I can certainly get that and get it over to you.
Okay, that, that'd be helpful. Thank you. But yeah, so that's the motion on the floor, and I'll go ahead and move to approve this one.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second for the Verizon jetpack agreement. All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, that wraps up the board meeting for tonight, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, that wraps up the board meeting for tonight, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Can I say one thing?
Go ahead, Mark.
I just love that we actually work really well, even when we don't agree all the time. You cannot appreciate this in a democracy and the way things work can be frustrating. But I know I really trust that everybody on this screen right now is doing the right thing. Good night.
All right. I'll second Matthew's adjourning motion. All those in favor to adjourn? Seven oh. All right, thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night all.
Take care.